Good morning, Ellen Lorine, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know what's going on. I played with the same things that I played with yesterday morning. Yesterday morning they didn't work, today they did.
Interesting.
So.
Emery, where do we have AEDs besides City Hall?
In all of our police vehicles.
Any other buildings?
I don't know, I would think, I would hope we have something over at Maintenance.
I'm not sure we do.
Oh, well, maybe we should.
That's what I'm thinking, there in the net house.
Right. And maybe the Rollins Center if we're gonna have more and more meetings there.
Cause they, um, when they inspected our fire extinguishers, they said our pads on our AED expire November. I was gonna ask the chief to order extra pads if our machines compatible with their pads.
Right.
If not, we get them through alarm communications, they're $130 a piece.
Wow.
Versus eight for the PDs.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully it's the same, oh, that sun's gonna come in and be right on my face, but this is, I have my little corner of the living room that
You set up.
Yeah, and I've moved to an office chair because my back was killing me, trying, sitting on the sofa all day, it was too much.
We should probably have two for streets, one on, in each building.
Yeah. Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
I'm good, my mic decided to start working again.
Hopefully that stays with us all day.
Hello, everybody.
That's my hope.
Morning, Bonnie.
Good morning.
Okay, we'll see if this works with audio.
Okay.
I mean, visual. Yeah. Yeah.
It's nice.
Oh, thank you, that's the, uh, there's Brooke in the kitchen.
Oh, there she is.
Excellent. So, I have news for you.
What's that?
You're not coming back.
No.
That's what I've been waiting in, I'm like, she likes it too much up there.
Uh, to stack a cord of wood. He's got a lot of wood.
Didn't I tell you that was gonna be the case?
Yeah, I mean, well, like I said, I couldn't, there was no option to order less. So, and then the guy, so he dumps all this wood in the driveway. And he very helpfully says, this, he shows me a log, and he says, this is red oak. He said, there's a lot of red oak in there, and he said, this is the, it takes a little longer to cure, but he said, this is the best burning wood. And I looked at him like, do you really think I'm gonna take this and put it into two stacks of different kinds of wood before I stack it? I mean, I didn't say anything, but holy moly, anyways, all stacked.
So some people probably would, I'm impressed that you did it.
Well, I wanted to get it all done because it, the guy who's gonna plow the driveway came by. And we had a whole discussion about where I could put the wood, given the fact that he needs someplace to put the snow. And so leaving it in a big pile in the driveway just wasn't an option.
Wasn't gonna work.
Yeah.
I would've had the guy that plows the driveway say, you wanna stack this wood?
Yeah, well, it, it took most of the day, but, um, but it's done.
Well, you don't have to go to the gym for a couple of days, so.
I was, I was sore last night, but I'm okay today, so, um, you know, I slept very well.
So, here's an, an update on the, um, Phase 24, the Coleman Avenue project, they've had to pause because they've got a COVID positive person on the crew. And others need to test and quarantine and all that stuff.
They haven't really started.
Right.
I mean, all they've done is put out surveys, there's nothing being done, so.
Okay.
Emery, did you get any, did you hear anything about the officer from Milford that was shot last night?
No.
It was a deputy US marshal, wasn't it?
Uh, he's also a police officer on the Milford force, I believe.
Where, where was, was that the?
Down, down by, uh, down by the
The Cracker Barrel? I knew there was a shooting near the Cracker Barrel. Oh my gosh, was, was he killed or?
Good. I understand he was taken to BB and immediately medevac'd up to Oh. So.
That's terrible.
Apparently, well, apparently he, one shot at least, uh, was in the head, so, not good. It's just what Archie Campbell needed, I'm sure.
That's awful.
Yeah.
Okay, I see it in the news journal right now.
What, what kind, I didn't read the article Ted, what kind of a
I haven't read the article.
Do you know what I mean, robbery, was it a traffic stop, was it a?
No, I think it was, it was premeditated of some sort.
Um, on it, just to bring these two threads together, the police and COVID, I asked Emery last night whether or not we have taken steps to, to get our police officers to, you know, as close to the front of the queue as is, you know, gonna happen to get vaccinated as public safety officers, and apparently, you know, obviously Emery can speak to it, but Chief Spell has already gotten in touch with, um, I forget who, but has gotten in touch with BB about
Cheryl Hoppel.
Cheryl Hoppel thing.
So, yeah, so they're right at the, the front of the queue.
And are they willing to take it?
Um, that
An issue.
We have not determined, that was one of the chief's concerns.
Yeah.
It wasn't, that, he did not know, oh, hold on.
What do we do, what do we do if we have police officers who interact with the public, um, who have chosen, which is their right, um, I guess, but have chosen not to, uh, become vaccinated?
I guess we'll have to figure that out once
When it happens, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully everybody will, but
Do we have anybody who refuses to get the flu shot? That would be a good sort of precursor as to making, you know, I don't.
I don't know, because we offer it here, but, I mean, some people don't get it because they get it elsewhere.
Yeah, but I mean, the chief could probably ask the 12 of them, or, you know, the group, you know, with anybody, or probably, or may already know, you know. But given Delaware is getting 8,000, uh, 8,000 doses of the initial tranche, we're pretty low on the priority.
Right.
I know, but you still have to, you still have to make your case.
So, all right, so it's 9:02, we've got, um, seven attendees, summer staff, um, do, do you want the staff brought in to the table?
Um, I, you know, but we can, uh, are they, do we need to have them participate in any of this discussion?
There, there may be some where, where you all have questions for them.
Okay, so why don't you bring in, uh, the, the staff, you've got Robin, and you've got
And Janelle, and Charlie.
Okay, you wanna
Yeah, I don't know that We'll, we'll let Charlie sit back and listen and bring
I would just bring Janelle and Robin for now.
And then there's one that says admin, that might be Rick.
Okay, let's find out who it is. Is.
It is? Yes, okay, so. And then, oh, and Janet, I thought that Janet was off.
I thought Janet was off today. Hello, Janelle, hello, Rick, hello, Robin, and there's Janet.
I'm gonna rename Rick.
As we go down these priorities, I see that you've lumped together the ones submitted by the council and by department managers. Can you tell us which group they came from?
You know, I thought about that, I, I can, I, I can, and I, I thought about that last night, after I sent it out, I thought, eh, maybe I should've put C and S. But I have it all here, so.
Okay, good. Right, so I think we've got everybody, I don't know if Janet's gonna turn on her video or not, but doesn't really matter at this point. So it looks like it's 9:04, and we are here for a strategy session, a regular public meeting, but a strategy session for the mayor and council. And I think we can go ahead and get started, Emery, thank you for pulling this together.
No problem, actually, can I, Ellen Lorine, can I ask you, can you PDF these two documents that I sent out and attach them to the agenda so that anybody who's watching has the benefit of seeing them, um, under a foyer, we, we are supposed to provide them, make them available.
So, Emery, do, do we wanna start with a review of the 2019 priorities that we set and where
Yeah, so in, in 2019, priorities were set, and last year we kinda updated where things stood. You know, the, the, it seemed like the very high priorities at the time, if you look at, at what got fives, were annexation, that meant all, all five council people thought it was a high priority. The annexation, updating the building code, community policing, emergency preparedness, addressing utility cuts, capital improvement plan, street prioritization. So those were all kind of the, the top things, some of those reoccur in this, and others do not, so I don't know if that's an indication that priorities have shifted, or, um, you know, the, the other, one of the other things that consistently comes up is the, the floodplain flooding, preparing for sea level rise and climate change, so, and, and a lot of those things, we are making, you know, pretty significant progress. Electronic file storage was something that was highly rated in 2019, and we are in the process of putting, putting the documents into the storage system. So, we're, we're moving forward on that.
And when you say the documents, Emery, I, I know you're working on the minutes, which is great, the minutes for the council, what about all the other documents?
So, we, we've started with minutes, um, in order to do property specific records, we need an additional file cabinet. So we have the information, you know, the dollar amounts and everything, and, and we plan to put that in, in the upcoming budget.
Is that an electronic file cabinet, you mean?
Yes, it's an electronic file cabinet, um, so that would, we would work to get all of the building permits, leases, lease extensions, licenses, all of those types of documents, historic H park applications, board of adjustment applications, because they're property specific, they would go in the, the property specific cabinet.
Wonderful.
That, it, it makes it easier to search. So, yeah, so we started with minutes, um, I think, we, so we've had an intern two days a week. She will be finishing up at Christmas time, Christmas week will be here last week, and then she'll be going back to school. I think it's probably worth trying to find, um, it, probably college level intern, again, going forward, because otherwise I'm not sure how we would keep up the scanning.
Right.
So, um
Getting all those leases and permits are into a system
Oh, yeah. It, it will be a lot of time, for sure.
Well, we are ahead of the game, because a few years ago, we did go ahead and put all of those into individual files. So we're at a summit, we're the head of the, the curve, it'll make much easier because of that work that was done four, three or four years ago.
So, um, I mean, I don't know if you wanna, I, I didn't know if we wanted to spend a whole lot of time on the, the prior priorities, I mean, I think
Well, let's go through it, let's go through and talk about what's, what we've accomplished.
Okay.
Like, the CRS thing has been finished.
Well, finished for now.
But, but exactly.
It's not, right, it's ongoing, right. That's true.
The second item on the, on your list here, talks about the fact that we still had disputed CRM situation with a, with the floodplain rating.
Right.
And that's done, right, Robin?
He's here somewhere.
He's there, he's muted.
It is done, we've Two and eight. Is that correct?
When you go down to the encroachment, the survey of the Lewis Beach right-of-way is done.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, the, the buffer ordinance, they said we need more information and, and continue to research. And at this point, we have a buffer ordinance, it's gonna get reworked, but, but you're right, it's been accomplished. The development standards, the planning commission, as I think everybody knows, has developed a number of, of subcommittees to tackle specific issues. And in addition, they also have a subcommittee that's putting together an action plan. And I think that that will take this development standards further along.
Right. Okay.
Speed enforcement, I mean, I, I don't know, Bonnie, do you wanna share your, your thoughts on this, that, the, what they did during the fall, and hopefully will resume here shortly, um, once numbers stabilize, um, I think was a good system of, of speed enforcement. Do you wanna, I know that was one of your issues.
Um, yeah, as the, uh, the person who has complained the loudest, I think, about speeding in, in Lewis, as we know, we've set as a matter of policy, um, a, a tolerance of how far above our speed limit we'll accept. The, I, I think that the, um, the police department has done exactly the right thing in issuing warnings instead of tickets. I just want anybody and everybody who is listening to this to know that this has nothing to do with revenue generation, it has everything to do with public safety. So, um, the, the proportion of, of tickets to warnings is, is very favorable to, to speeders. But I believe that, um, that they're being very careful and judicious about speed enforcement given COVID. So, um, so I applaud, uh, I applaud the police department, I think they're doing everything that is reasonable, um, given the situation we find ourselves in.
Okay.
I just have one comment on that, is, um, I noticed, like, right, change, shift changes at BB Hospital tends to see a, a large spike in, in speeding, so it may just benefit us to communicate with BB that they might wanna put it, put their employees on notice, that, that's, that's one of the worst times, it's like right before 7 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
It's an easy one to do.
Um, then we have drone for monitoring the trails in the beach area. We purchased the drone in, in 2019, we used it quite a bit this year, um, in, I know we got a little bit of criticism where we had the, the drone making the announcement, reminding people to practice social distancing on the trail. Um, but we, we did that, and we used it to monitor the, the beach activity. So, that has been, I think it, it, we purchased the drone and we're using it in a number of ways, so, any comments, thoughts on that?
This
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this, this might be a mechanism to incorporate more community policing, and just let, maybe make announcements of when the drone's gonna be out, and people can interact that way, you know?
Yeah, I guess my question was, um, as we all know, there have been concerns expressed by people on the beach, particularly, or maybe exclusively in the summer, about various forms of bad behavior. Is, is the drone, when it's being used for that kind of monitoring, has it proven effective, has it seen, quote, seen things that we had, that police force otherwise wouldn't see, or is that just not what we've been using it for yet?
I don't think it's what we've been using it for, we did use it to look at, you know, a lot of the items stored on the beach. One of the, one of the problems that you have is that, to do it, you can't fly over highly populated areas, so there are ways to do it where you're not over the populated area, where maybe you pull it back and it's over the houses, and, you know, but, the, the peak time is not necessarily the, the time that's gonna be, I guess, the, in, in terms of the FAA regulations, the best to fly, the, um, and, and I don't know, like, the, the poor behavior, I'm not sure that it's gonna help with that.
Okay.
I, I don't know, you squatting in the dunes, you know, I don't know that we wanna
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm not a big fan of the eye in the sky.
Right.
However, from a practical standpoint, to, to address the concerns, there's no way, there's no way that, whether we had an ambassador program, or there's just the police, that we can be everywhere all the time
Right.
to catch the kind of stuff that people are complaining about down on the beach, so, you know, I think it's something we need to sort of keep in the back of our minds as to, you know, how big brother do we wanna be, given the vociferous criticism we've gotten, so it's just something to think about, and for that matter, how much, perhaps most importantly, how much do the people who live on the beach, when they weigh this kind of surveillance, if we were to even do such a thing, you know, is that the, is that a trade-off that they're willing to, to have? I, I don't know that it would be a trade-off I, I'd take, but I, I think we, if we get, if we go down that road, it's something we have to think about.
Right, and there are very strict, especially as it relates to police, there are very strict requirements, you know, some have come down through the courts on what's fair game and what's not, I mean, you're, you're really not supposed to be using the drone to get in on people's private property.
Right.
So
Being very much, that the, the concerns that have been expressed, while a few of them have involved private property, most of them seem to be on public
Right.
Correct.
So
I have a quick question, Emery, regarding the drone, have, uh, what is the training that is required for, of the police force to be operators of the drone?
So, um, you need to get an F, a pilot's license through the FAA.
Uh-huh.
Um, so you have, it's training, but it's also a, a test that you need to take, and you need to pass the test. So right now, we have two licensed, um, pilots in the police department. Drone pilots.
Drone pilots.
We wouldn't put them in a plane, but
Right, but they are two, we have two licensed officers, okay, thank you.
So, anything else on drones? You know, again, I think it, it's something that we're gonna continue to monitor, and I, and I think all of us, including the, the police department, are very cognizant of privacy issues as we move forward with this, and making sure that we're not using it in a way to be overly big brother. Community policing, so that, that was a, a very high priority. If you look at our list this time, there are some police things on there. I don't think that, it doesn't specifically say community policing, but I think that is still a priority, um, based on everything I've heard, you know, if, so last year, we reported we had the, the bicycle officers certified, we had meet and greets in the, in the spring and in the fall. Obviously, 2020 has been a, a not, you're not meeting and greeting because it's, you know, got its own issues, um, but the, the chief has set standards for foot patrols and other types of interactions. I, I think this will be an ongoing effort to continue.
Yeah, that was tougher COVID, COVID, to sort of judge how that
Right. Um, policing of the beach, including the streets, again, this gets back to that issue of some of the behaviors. That's, so you're, you're gonna see in the, the budget request, and we haven't put together the draft budget yet, but, um, I can tell you that the chief has put in a request to have seasonal officers, so that, um, that would help to get more eyes on the street in, in those areas. We've also put together, if, if council determines that you want parking enforcement on the streets, more, more strict parking enforcement on the streets, we also have, um, cost estimates to increase our, our parking enforcement to address that, so you know, that is obviously an ongoing effort, and a lot will be determined through the beach parking committee, um, but we do have budget estimates to address some of those things. Anything else there? Okay. Supervision and accountability, again, this is under the police category. We have the police review committee, I, Rob, you sent an email, I guess, earlier this week, I think you're, that committee's gonna start getting together in early January?
I think that's what Bonnie and I feel would be appropriate, we, uh, it, with one thing and another, it hasn't seemed timely yet.
Okay, and then, I mean, there are a number of things that, that you are all aware of, that we've, um, you know, made, made some changes that I think, um, you know, enhance that citizen oversight, or not citizen, civilian oversight. We've got, um, all of the recruitments are, are being handled through admin, the, the interviews are being done by them, but, you know, just like with any other position, the applications are being reviewed, admin and police department, and there's coordination rather than them doing a recruitment, and then we see the final candidate, and that's it, so I think, um, there, there have been positive efforts in that. Coordination with fire, police, well, I'm sorry, with fire police, DRBA, state parks, BB, public safety, and UD public safety. This is an ongoing effort, I mean, the chief has said that the department actually has very strong, positive relationship with the, the various other entities. I don't know if anybody has any comments or thoughts on that.
This one will probably remain on the list always.
Yep. Yep. And then fixed cameras. We had five people that, that called that a medium priority. And I think this was kind of addressed by the police review committee. Am I correct?
Uh, let's. See, I was just making a note, so I lost.
What is the fixed camera, please?
This was, um, speed enforcement cameras.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not sure what our agenda will be.
Okay.
And Bonnie, if you have thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, we talked a lot about, in the general area of speed enforcement, we talked a lot about various ideas. You know, cameras that, that automatically send out speeding tickets, additional units, and I think the, where the committee eventually came down for now is the, moving the fixed units around, you know, the, the ones that start blinking when you, well, I guess they're not fixed, moving the mobile ones around. We have fixed units on, let's see, Gills Neck, Cedar, Savannah. I think. Where, please? New, is it New Road? So the question was moving the, the portable units around. The chief, we asked the chief if he thought an additional unit or units was needed. He said no. And obviously we'll go with that. So we'll see. You know, I think that the, the blinking does make an impression on some people. Whether it's, it's, uh, truly effective or not, I don't know. But anyway, that's where the committee ended up, if I remember the report correctly.
I don't believe there have been any complaints on Gills Neck Road since that fixed, since that feedback monitor was put in on Gills Neck. At least I haven't had any.
That's because people are too busy dodging the bicycles to speed.
All right. Anything else on police before we move on to community services, streets, parks, recreation, trails, bike pad and public art? So emergency preparedness, the reentry plan is complete. The five-year frag mighties plan has been implemented, or we've been trying to implement it. We have not been able to burn because of COVID.
Or wind.
Can you explain that to me? I, I, I don't, I don't question it at all. I just didn't quite understand how COVID kept from killing frag mighties.
I think it has to do with strain on emergency services and also just, just stress on the population.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine. I just, it, it just was not self evident to me how one was related to the other.
Well, right. And I, I found it interesting that one week they said, we're gonna burn next week, and then the, the next week they said, we're not gonna burn because of COVID. Like, well, COVID was here last week, but it, you know, it, I'm sure there are plenty of dynamics going on.
Well, it's also, I mean, it doesn't take a genius to see that COVID is accelerating everywhere. I mean, with our league just closed down because of a couple of COVID cases, we just heard about Monroe. I mean, the next few months are just gonna be rough, period.
Yep. Yep.
I think you heard this yesterday at the Rascal Conference when Carol Rete was talking about the fact that, you know, she sort of passed off all of her other duties with the Department of Public Health because she had to divert her energy strictly to COVID.
Right. So she, she delegated pretty much every other, every other operational thing to a deputy. So.
Which, which included the, the state's response to the opioid addiction.
Right.
So I mean, obviously that's a big problem in the state.
And, and she put it in the hands of a competent person, but it's.
Oh, yeah, but she delegated, she.
Right.
She, she couldn't for, she couldn't focus on the COVID thing and still focused on.
Right.
On opioid addiction. And I think you see the same thing with Lieutenant Governor, because really the opioid response was her thing and she's kind of sidelined that as well. So.
So, you know, we have the reentry plan complete. We, we've been working on the frag mighties. We ha- well, we haven't burned, we have sprayed and we have cut. So we, we are making progress on that.
Or ready to burn.
Right. We're ready to burn. Changing beach signage, and that was not ranked, just do. That was where we changed the rules. We, we made the, they called them the, the no, the no signs because it was no this, no that, no. And, and I, I remember Presley sent a, a picture where somebody had, had taken a picture of one of the signs and put at the top of it, no fun. It's like, so we, we've, we've redone the beach signage to be more, more friendly. Parking jitney, again, that's, that's still, yes, that'll be something that, that comes out of parking, the various parking committees. Weekly recycling, we have accomplished. And we did not increase staff to do it. We did it with existing staff. Just a foreshadowing, and it's, it's not as much because of this. But the maintenance department has requested an additional position in the next year's budget. So that, that could be coming your way, but i- it's not, it's not about recycling. It's about, you know, them taking the more active role in facilities and just the overall demands. Complete the plan for Great Marsh Park. Let, let's hope that happens in twenty twenty-one. Barry Duncan and Rodney Robinson have taken the lead, so we said that a year ago. And, um, I, I know they have toward the end of this year made a little more progress. You know, I, I think Barry was in Florida early in the year, and then he came back and we were gonna all get together and then COVID hit. And just like so many other things, you know, at, at first, I think everybody was waiting until we could all get together. And here we sit. Resiliency training and planning. Yeah, I think that, that's an ongoing effort. I think, you can, for those of you who were at the, the Water Workshop three last week, I mean, I think that that was a, a great training opportunity and, and it's also, um, you know, a movement in the direction of our partnerships with the, the various state agencies. Janelle, did you want to add anything to that on kind of where we are on resiliency training and planning?
I think you pretty much covered it. I mean, we continue working with, in partnering with different state agencies, looking and identifying items that the commission's looking to do, and a lot of them are towards resiliency. So, and I know the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee is definitely working on that.
Okay.
One of the questions that came up at the Rascal Conference, for those of us who were there, was the issue of resiliency versus recovery.
Hmm, right.
And the, how one needs to have a recovery plan as well as a resiliency plan. And I think that's something we will need to talk about at the mitigation committee going forward.
Great. Well, and, and part of it, you know, you think of the emergency as, as a day or a week, not a year plus. So. All right. Anything else in this topic area before we move on to administrative and legislative? Okay. Electric vehicles. And I have here such as scooters and I know, so I, I know part of that was the issue of kind of the electric assist bikes on the trails. The scooters. I think Bonnie, this was something you might have brought up. Am I right?
Uh, I brought up the question of whether or not electric bikes and, and, you know, electrified two-wheel vehicles, I guess, were allowed on the trails. Denrec got back to us and said they're not.
Okay.
Whether or not that is completely unenforceable. So whether or not that is happening, I, I, I don't know. But as we all know, the trails are unsafe at times based on, on unfortunate behaviors by both pedestrians and bicyclists. And, uh, what we don't need to add to that is, you know, motorized vehicles. But, you know, we'll just have to see. So anyway, the, the answer basically is according to the state, which owns the trails, they're not allowed. And, and there you have it.
Okay.
May I add to that? I think there's a definition of how much assistance a bike can get before it's classified as a motorized vehicle, because e-bikes are now a, a big thing. So we might want to ask the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee to advise on both the kind of scooters that people use on sidewalks and the kind of e-bikes that people use on trails and, and help us draw some lines.
Well, and, and we can always, as it relates to the trail segments and frankly, the sidewalks, we could always have regulations that are more stringent than what the state allows.
Right. So what those regulations should be maybe is a good question for them.
Well, I think posting that kind of stuff at the trail heads and various spots where there are rest areas along the way of the trail might not be a bad idea. And that's something that, you know, we really only have one area in the city right now that has a rest area, which is the trailhead at the library. But there, there, there is a rest area at, right at Savannah Road where it crosses. There's another one out on, in Nassau. And, and I think posting those kinds of things would be a good idea. And that's something, Rob, you're right. The board, or the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee could work on with the Denrec, getting those things, that kind of signage posted.
Okay.
Great.
I'll speak up and just make one comment about that. I think it's really important that whatever policy the city adopts with respect to electric vehicles, these electric bikes, it's gonna have to be also picked up and endorsed, embraced by the county as well. The city's county line is not relevant to people who are on the bike trails and, you know, covering great distances. So if they're allowed to, not allowed to have electric bikes or allowed to have electric bikes in the city, whatever it is, and not allowed to use them in the county, I don't think we can have a bifurcated policing or administrative action here. I don't think that'd be wise.
Right. Yeah. Well, trails are controlled by Denrec, not so much by the county.
Or Delphi.
But I understand, but it, okay.
Okay. Utility cuts. So utility cuts, I, I'm gonna give my little confession here. Charlie actually put together something on utility cuts that's been sitting, I think, on my desk and on Robin's desk that we, we need to, to bump up to the, the priority. But we do anticipate that there will be some code changes that'll be needed and we'll also need to develop a, a specification for utility cuts where we have porous pavement. So.
Just, just to avoid any confusion, by utility cuts, we're not talking about cuts in utility services. We're talking about cuts to, to run utilities.
Right.
To read utility cuts or pavement cuts for utilities.
Right, just, just, just to avoid any confusion there.
Yeah.
Um, the marine commercial district. Now, this has kind of been pushed to the back burner of the planning commission. And I suspect that it, it's gonna end up, once some of the other things they're working on are, are completed, it's gonna end up having to move up again because things can only stay silent for so long. And this was really a big issue a few years ago where, you know, what exactly does the city want from the marine commercial district? You know, there was a, a sense that really it should be more marine dependent and marine compatible. So it's a big project. I think it, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are, but this is probably gonna wait until some of the other things the planning commission is working on have.
What are you foreshadowing, Anne Murray, when you say that you think that this is coming up again?
Well, I, I just, my, just my experience is when issues kind of go dormant for a while, they always, they always come back up. So, so we will have an application at some point that will cause us to need to, to put this back to the front burner. I mean, it, it really was a, a hot issue from what, about two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen?
Right.
Yeah, and I think, I think the big concern was that the, the marine commercial district, it was a special rules written for it that really have not been successful in, in achieving the goals. So the question was eventually when that whole side of the canal is, is renovated, redeveloped, whatever happens over there, we need to have an idea through, in the zoning code as to what we want. Because what, what, I understand what, what people were trying to accomplish, but it just wasn't, didn't work. I think that's where we were. And we have a report from, I'm gonna forget the name of the consultant, but we have a report. Thank you, ERM, on giving various ideas and even, even code language on how we could, how, on some ideas about how we might be forward. I, I think that the planning commission has done some work on this.
They have. We actually did a, a trip to Rock Hall, Maryland.
That's right.
And we met with, you know, some of the folks from the town there. We did a tour of the town and, and so quite a bit of, of effort had gone into it. And then we got kind of slammed, I shouldn't say slammed. We, we got very busy with development applications. And then in reviewing the development applications, a number of other code deficiencies were kind of revealed that, that they've needed to focus on. So, um, I, I think it, it needs to stay on the radar, but I think that some of the things that they're working on now, just that the bandwidth wouldn't be there to also deal with marine commercial at the same time.
I think it needs to stay on the, on the radar pretty high because you don't want to be in a reactive position.
Right.
Where we were the last time, because we didn't, we didn't really address the situation. And what's happening, what we've seen happen is more and more of what was originally zoned as a marine commercial district has turned into residential. And, uh, and that was one of the concerns that came up the last time. So I don't think we should push this too far down on a priority.
Right.
Because the potential for the redevelopment on that side of the canal is pretty great. May I ask you a real quick question, please? Excuse me. Regarding the marine commercial district, Anne Marie, are you, is there, has there been any suggestion or are you anticipating that the borders of the marine commercial district would be affected by any conversation, discussion coming up?
Um, the borders meaning the, where it's located?
Right.
I mean, that was all part of. That was all part of the, the discussion that was underway when, when this was kind of on the front burner before. So, yeah, I think.
Right.
Where the marine commercial is located, what are the uses? I mean, it, it's pretty much all of it.
Okay. All right. Because it's my understanding that that district is a very specified, described area of what's over on the beach. Isn't that, isn't that a correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Basically, Anger Road, Savannah Road down to American Legion.
Right.
Right. That's what I thought. It's very small. Thank you, Ted.
And, and, um, and the ferry terminal.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Electronic file storage, we've talked about. Again, that's, you know, we, we started it. It's, it's gonna be, implementing it is gonna take some time, but it is, we're underway. The state and county relationship, I think this is always. The state and county relationship, I think this is always, and this comes up on the priorities that, that you all submitted for today as well. You know, again, I'm just gonna say, I think things like the three water workshops that the Planning Commission have held and our involvement in Rascal are all very, well, and our involvement in ACT, I think are all very helpful in creating and supporting those partnerships and relationships.
But remember, we have two new members of County Council.
We do.
One of them is ours and the other one, you know, Cynthia Green. So, I think there's a lot of import in working on the relationship with County Council.
Yep.
Because Mark Schaefer and Cynthia Green will be brand new to the table. We've had an excellent working relationship with IG during his tenure, but there's work to be done there. A lot of work.
Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I just note that the church just got, for Big Oyster, I assume most of you saw it, they just rezoned that one, nearly an acre parcel to high commercial, intense commercial usage. So, the church could sell it to Big Oyster, so Big Oyster could expand. And that just happened on December the 1st. So...
Right.
Little sidebar question about that, Ted. Do we know if, how the church buildings are served with water and sewer?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I suspect their county sewer.
I would think so, yeah.
Well, not the church buildings, I'm sorry.
I doubt that.
No, the church buildings are not probably, but the, I think what you get...
Big Oyster is served by county sewer.
Yeah.
It is. And they serve by water, water also by Artesian or whomever?
Um...
Do we know?
It would either be BPW or Tidewater.
We'll find that out.
We'll find out.
We're gonna, we're gonna get that list next, the end of next week. A week from today, we should have a complete list of what they, where, who they're serving. Okay?
Great.
Ted, you saying by the 20th, by the 20th of December, essentially, we should have that list?
I asked for it, that it be provided to us, not later than the 19th. Okay?
Okay. All right. Code revisions, and again, we, there's a lot about code revisions on our, the list that we have for today. Same with capital improvement plan and street prioritization. So, you know, you all heard the beginning of Charlie's presentation on the new street assessment work that's been done. So, that, we've definitely made progress on that. And with Allison as the facilities foreman and getting a better handle on our facilities, I think, you know, putting together a capital improvement plan, a multi-year capital improvement plan is, I think, the reasonable next step. And I think, I'm looking at Donna Lorraine and see if she's gonna kill me, but I think it's achievable in the next 12 months. I mean, we're gonna try.
It's a goal we're gonna work for.
Yep. So, any thoughts, comments? I see, I see Bonnie smirking a little like, yeah, right.
I'm smirking. I actually, what I was, I was thinking quite the opposite. I was thinking, this is an initiative that's long overdue and we need to take whatever time is necessary to do it right. And I applaud, moving forward, to, to make sure we properly maintain the city's buildings.
All right. Any other thoughts before we move on? Timely information on the website. We, I think we've improved in that. Janelle has been doing a bang-up job getting information out on the website. I do think that, I would like to put together kind of a team because part of it is, you know, Janelle puts information up, one, she maintains all of the planning stuff and that's always kept up to date. And she also, you know, puts up any information she's asked to put up. But we also need to make sure that departments are regularly reviewing their information and adding to it, taking things down when they're dated and stuff like that. So, but I do think that we've improved in that regard. Any thoughts?
Definitely.
Providing information on the net house usage, we've now included that in my monthly reports along with the Rollins Center. Personnel policies and procedures, that's newly adopted. You know, again, I know that there are some questions about benefits or thoughts about employee benefits. And in the past, we have discussed those things during the budget meetings. So, I, you know, I think that there are opportunities to continue to, to review those. Any thoughts, comments there?
Seems to be the appropriate time to do it.
Zoning district review, the Planning Commission and City Council have made a number of changes to some of the zoning districts. I think it's, at this point, more the other aspects of the zoning ordinance that are being reviewed. Monitoring state and county legislation. Again, I think this is hugely important, you know, and I'll share one concern. And I don't know, Ted, you may have some thoughts. The League has not held any virtual meetings.
None.
During COVID. And SCAT has gone back to in-person breakfast meetings, even in, even in January, which I was shocked.
That may get canceled. I don't know if it'll happen. Based on, Governor may announce in the next week or so, it may get canceled.
Well, the Governor made an announcement yesterday that I would hope cancels it. I emailed Kristen and said, you know, because part of the thing is, when they're meeting in person, there's no virtual option. If they had a virtual option, it would be one thing, but I'm concerned that SCAT's meeting, but people who aren't comfortable going to the in-person meetings are left out of the discussion and we've got a legislative session coming up. So, I think we've always, you know, relied very heavily on the League and SCAT. And I think we need to figure out how to make sure nothing gets lost in the mix, given the challenges of COVID. I don't know if anybody has thoughts there, Mayor?
Well, where they're holding the SCAT Steering Committee breakfast, it's impossible to do a virtual meeting because they're holding it, they're no longer holding it at... They're, they're holding it, they're holding it at First State Community Action in their, in their large meeting space, which has worked out well. I've been to one of them. But it's impossible to do it there. So, I think probably, you know, if they're gonna do a virtual meeting, they're gonna need to, they're gonna need to disband the idea that they're having any kind of in-person meeting for a while and then set it up as a Zoom call. It's the only way I think it can happen.
Yeah. And, and I don't, I just don't feel like they want to do that.
Well, I think it's a matter of somebody taking ownership of it.
I was gonna say, we maybe propose forming a different, a new committee that's virtual, that's virtual rather than rely on existing.
Well, I... Go ahead.
Thing, if take, take the bull by the horn and if, have some way to organize between the towns that are being affected here in Sussex County, form a new group that they're not willing to meet virtually.
I think you do. First of all, let's go to Gene DeBorneck and Billy West, who've really put, and Kristen, who've been holding the SCAT group together and see if we can't get them to consider doing a virtual meeting. I think that would be a first step. I don't, you know, we may have to form a new group that we get together. But ACT has been meeting virtually with pretty good success. And I think there's no reason why SCAT couldn't do it.
And ACT, ACT now has a lobbyist.
Right.
So, you know, I think that that will help very much in, in staying on top of the legislative issues that affect the coastal communities.
Lobbyist for ACT is also the lobbyist for the League.
For the League, great.
So...
And Carl sends out a lot of emails. I just think that you kind of miss things when it's only email.
Of course, yeah. Well, first of all, you miss what's, you miss the interaction with your counterparts in other communities.
Right.
And that's probably the most. So, but we could talk, we could talk to Gene and see where that goes.
Okay.
Ted, with the lobbyist for ACT?
Who's the lobbyist? Lincoln.
Lincoln Willis.
He's also the lobbyist for the League, right?
Yes, correct.
And how does ACT fund his lobbying work?
Out of our, out of our, I know, our month, our annual dues, the $4,000 that we pay for annual dues.
Thanks.
Okay. Monitor CTP and Delphi projects. Well, I think some of us, I think, attended a meeting last night on the Old Orchard Road realignment. I do sit on the Five Points Working Group. So, yeah, I think we actually are, I think we have a good rapport with Delphi on their capital projects and that we're kind of keyed in in the areas we need to. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
I would just say the acquisition of the Jones Farm puts us in a better position to work with Delphi because the whole Clay Road, obviously, they bumped that installation of that signal or the signalization of that intersection up, which was fabulous, a big improvement for health and safety. But that whole intersection and all of Clay Road is slated for redevelopment. And but I think our, having an ownership position there puts us in a better position to talk to Delphi.
Ted? Ted?
I beg your pardon?
Have we closed yet?
Yes, it's all done. It was done a week ago, Monday.
Okay.
Ted, what is, what are the plans for Clay Road, if you know?
It's gonna be widened a little bit. They're gonna take some, I think they're gonna take the belly out of it, you know, where it goes down into the valley. I think there's gonna be some of that. But I don't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any drawings. Yeah. I think the first thing is what was going on last night, the realignment of Old Orchard Road, which will bring Old Orchard Road and eliminate that now treacherous intersection of Old Orchard and Savannah. That'll eliminate that and bring it up to the signal there where Clay Road and Marsh Road or whatever it's called come together.
Is the idea still to put a big traffic circle at West Coast Corner?
Right now, yes.
Yep.
Anne Marie, on this monitoring piece, do we, do we have anything in place formally with Denrec? I know that there was some issues with the dunes, the paths this past season. Do we have anything in place in terms of monitoring updates that they do or is there like a...
Well, I think the issue with the dunes, after the mayor got involved, will, will not happen again. I think what happened is the communication happened at a different level of each organization. And I think that that's been fixed. And we actually have a very strong relationship with the Shoreline and Waterway Management section. So, I do think that that was kind of a one-off that we're not gonna see again. Would you agree, Mayor?
I would totally agree. And Jennifer has been very responsive.
Exactly.
We talked to her. I get calls from time to time about concerns about the beach, so she's been very responsive. She's gone out in that with residents as recently as, I don't know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Right. And Mike Powell is also, I mean, Mike Powell is the administrator of that division of, or that section of Denrec. And he's been also just extremely responsive and accessible when we need him.
The issue that Andrew raised about the dunes, was that associated with when they, someone came through and cut through the, what was described as the emergency access points?
Yes.
Right.
Yep. Where they were widened, overly widened.
It was all, it was all had to do with the use of the wrong equipment.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
So, anything else there?
No.
Right. Charter revisions. So, we actually have a charter revision on Monday's agenda that we have a resolution for. I know Rob and Tim, we've talked about other potential charter revisions and there's always the elephant in the room charter revision that is kind of on hold. But this has Bonnie down as the contact. Did you have any other updates on charter revisions?
I do not. I'll just sort of, assuming that the Delaware Legislature meets this spring because COVID or it's effectively, as we all know, it was kind of a pared-down approach last year. We have been advised through the years to not inundate the legislature with charter changes. So, we need to pass them in January, February, January, February timeframe, maybe as late as March. But nothing wrong with mending our charter. It's just like any document, it needs to be amended from time to time. Just have to be careful about, judicious, I guess, is the way to put it, about what we send forward.
On that point, Bonnie, I had occasion to look back into the charter revisions that other municipalities have passed in the last decade. And they don't seem to follow that rule. So, I'm not sure how hard and fast it is that we should be parsimonious in proposing.
Well, perhaps. I mean, I, you know, I, all I can tell you is what we get from our representatives and we have to rely on our representatives to take these things forward. But if we want to be more aggressive about it, we certainly can and see what they have to say.
So, okay. I'm gonna kind of group the next two, Agenda Management for Meetings and Transparency Website and Streaming. So, we had shifted to doing our executive sessions before the regular meetings and starting the meetings at 6:30. And that was kind of based on a number of meetings that I think we were there till midnight or whatever. And I think we all agreed that the best decisions aren't made at midnight. So, that so far has been working. And then we also implemented iCompass, which allows us to put all of our meeting materials on the website, attached to the agenda. And then we started last February with audio streaming. And thanks to COVID, one of the, one of, I apologize, my phone's ringing. I don't, I'm not near enough to turn it off. Thanks to COVID, it kind of shifted us into high gear on that. And we now, instead of just audio streaming council meetings, we are posting all of our meetings on YouTube and linking them to the iCompass site. And when we look at the YouTube, we can see on YouTube how many views we've had of it once it's been posted to YouTube. We actually are getting quite a few meetings that are being watched, not live. So, I think that, you know, while we would all love to be meeting in person and look forward to a time when we can, that this kind of pushed us into making things more accessible to the public in a way that will have long-term effects. And we did install the camera in council chambers and will do so also in the Rollins Center so that once we do start meeting in person again, we will continue to have the video live and available. So, I feel like, you know, this is one of the, I mean, as awful as this last year has been, this is one of the silver linings is that it's really pushed us in this area.
Anne Marie, I might mention that I've had a couple of people who work express concern that our meetings are generally scheduled, or often scheduled during working hours. And I know we're an older community with a lot of retirees, but I think we want to be conscious of... of, of that we don't cut working people out of attending our meetings. With virtual meetings, that becomes easier to accomplish for everyone to attend, uh, an evening meeting.
Well, and it, it, again, it also, the fact that you can now watch a meeting after it's occurred.
That's not much consolation for somebody who wants to contribute.
Right. That, that's true. That is true. I, I mean, I, I think it, there's a, a balance because we do have quite a few meetings at night, and if we tried to do all of them at night, there's no way we'd get them all in.
Right.
So.
Well, maybe one of the thing, maybe one of the things that we need to think about is for daytime held meetings, is there, is there a way for us to, uh, you know, have, if you will, a, uh, a, a vehicle for people who do watch it after, after the fact, to be able to submit questions or submit statements. I don't know how to, you know, but anyway, that's, it, it would be one way of, of, uh, engaging those people who are not able to attend during a, a business day period. Is that possible, do you think?
I, I think we could. I mean, I think what we would need to do is, is put something on the agenda that says comments can be submitted before the meeting or after the meeting and, and indicate how they can be submitted. I, I don't think, that, that's definitely doable.
At what point then does a decision become effective?
Well, so I, I was thinking that same thing. When you think about the, the groups that meet during the day, for the most part, they're advisory committees making recommendations. They're not, um, you know, so, so they're, and, and a lot of them, it's kind of, you know, thinking about the parking committees. There's a lot of discussion that goes on over the course of several meetings before you get to the recommendation. So I think that there are ways to do it. Now, the one group, I'm going to stare at Robin, that has been meeting during the day that is not advisory is H Park.
Right.
And I don't, I don't know if we want to move them back to evening.
I, I'm sure that they would be amenable to that. I mean, I think they, they have liked meeting during the day, but I, I, they're a very reasonable group. I think they'd understand.
Yeah, I think Rob's point's well made. As someone who, who obviously still in the workforce, you know, it's about one partic, you know, being able to attend, but also who then we consider to be able to participate in those committees as well is limited if you're saying you're, you're only limiting yourself to people who can participate in the day. So I thank you for bringing that up, Rob.
I'm making notes on this, sorry.
Great. So am I.
Yeah, and, and it, it could be a matter of really, you know, it, it's really been to date, it's been the council or it's been the committees deciding whether they're going to meet during the day or the night. Maybe council needs to kind of be part of that or, or make those decisions. So, because a- again, I think, um, it is about transparency and it, it, so sometimes committees prefer to meet during the day because well, we all prefer a day meeting, right? But, you know, there are some committees that, that, you know, maybe based on the content should be meeting during later hours. So.
Before we move away from the agenda meeting part of this discussion, I'd like to, uh, this is an ask that I would like to raise, and that is, uh, I, there have been times when I have been caught flat footed when documents come in very close to the start of a meeting time. And if I am not keenly tied to my devices where I'm constantly monitoring my email, my different email accounts, that I might not know that those documents have been released to us and that I need to read those prior to a meeting. And if we, if there was some way that we could either have a, um, you know, an understanding that all documents would be distributed twenty-four hours prior to a meeting start, or if they are released prior, you know, just within that twenty-four hour period, that we'd be given some kind of, um, of text alert that there is more material. That would be very helpful.
That's a good idea on the, the alert.
Making a note on that too.
A code red.
Hopefully not.
Well, a code yellow, we'll call it, or whatever.
Okay. Good idea. All right. Um, financial strategies and plan, reserves, transfer tax, financial policies. So we did, the council did vote on something following a, a financial working group. I think there are still a number of financial policies that we are working on based on feedback from our auditor. I, I will defer to Ellen Lorraine, Bonnie and Andrew. Bonnie is the, the prior treasurer. Andrew is the current treasurer. Just any thoughts, comments?
I, I don't recall, um, off the top of my head, what policies that the auditors specified. Can you, can you remind me?
There was, um, like a cash handling policy was one that we have a draft. Ellen Lorraine, what else?
Probably setting up procedures at Canalfront Park.
Oh, right.
Right.
Ellen Lorraine, if, if, um, if someone wanted to read our financial policies, where would they find them?
Well, a lot of them we need to draft still. And then I think once they're drafted and approved, we could put them on our website. Um, but we need to draft a number of them.
Do we have any at all that we could put on the website?
I think we have the invest, the investment strategy I thought was on the, um, maybe I'm misremembering, but I thought it was on the, uh, the finance page or someplace else.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I believe that is up there.
But Rob, I mean, Rob raises a good point, which is, you know, is, is that, i- is that too many steps for people to know where to look?
So I would, I would encourage us to have transparent financial policies, both because I don't know what they are, including accounting policies. And I think it, it would be useful not just for the public at large, but for the council to know what our financial policies are in one place.
I'm going to turn this one over to Andrew.
You're, you're muted, Andrew. Purposely.
I was going to ask if we're going to have, obviously, an auditor come through again to give us additional insight on, yeah, so I think.
Every year.
Yeah. So I think that's probably our next step is to, again, see what they're coming back with as procedures that we should, um, amend. But to Rob's point, I think if any that are available, maybe we have a portal and just have a that underneath of either financial or maybe we have a policy section that includes all things that we have documented, uh, procedures and policies on the city.
We are currently getting that audit done. It is being done virtually as much as possible. As you can imagine, that does have challenges.
And we talked to, um, Emery about reviewing the investment policy is, as well. So that will be something, I think Rob had brought that up separately. So that'll be going through another review as well. So to Ellen Lorraine's point, once we have feedback from audit and a change in policy, then maybe we find a home for where to put the documents.
Right. And I, I think, I think everybody knows Christine has left. Um, we are looking to bring on another local government management fellow we would share with Milford again. You know, we were initially sharing Christine with Milford, and when COVID hit and Alice left and we needed somebody for the election, I asked Milford if we could just have Christine all to ourselves and they agreed. But I, I don't think that we need somebody one hundred percent full-time, but it, I mean, the, the capital, the capital plan and, um, these policies are, are things that we could definitely assign to, to somebody, you know, with a graduate level degree that, that would be able to do this. Um, and then capital projects is, is next. That's again, capital, capital projects, um, and facilities plan is the next one. Show up in, in varying ways in the, the questionnaires from, um, preparation for today. And then street rehabilitation, so.
Basically, all that's all fits under one.
Right. It's one umbrella there. Um, Savannah Road enhancement, or, oh, I know what it is. So the Savannah Road Bicycle and Pedestrian project where we put the shoulders in, or I'm sorry, the bike lanes in, down to American Legion Road. That's complete. The, one of the comments was to add enhancements. So I don't know if that's something that's still a priority. I know, Andrew, I think we've talked about the condition of the sidewalk there. I suspect that that will also come up when we get the, the report from GMB on the streets and the sidewalks. Um, and I think that we need to, when, when we get that, you know, typically we address sidewalks when we address the street. And I think that when we get the, the data from GMB, we're going to determine that maybe there's some sidewalk work that we need to do separately from the, the adjacent street, um, based on the various rankings.
Emery, you and I went out and looked at the sidewalks along Savannah Road in that section. And, uh, because we did not go forward with the TAP project, it was, it was originally purpose or proposed, that sidewalk work never got done.
Right.
And so, uh, the result is it comes back to us to now address it.
Right.
So, uh, once we, once we, when we, once we turned off on the, uh, on the TAP project as Del Lot had proposed it, we took ownership of whatever was going to happen there. Now, the sidewalk improvement that needs to be made there is largely from, um, privately owned property. So most of that will go back to the owners of the property once, once we do it.
Right. Right. So what, what, um, and Charlie's on, so, so hopefully he's listening. But I, I think what we need to do is once we get that information, what we might want to do separate from the street program is put together a concrete program for the spring, fund it knowing that we're going to bill, bill it back to the property owners, where it's adjacent. It, it, some of them may be adjacent to our parks and we just need to pay for it. But where it is a frontage sidewalk of a private property, the property owner is responsible. So we can contact the property owners, let them know we're going to be doing the work. And that they're going to be billed.
According to me.
Right. So. Any, any other thoughts there?
I think we had an inventory of like fifteen or eighteen panels of, of the sidewalk that needed to be replaced.
Right.
I did it.
Yep.
So all the, the sidewalk that would be replaced, of course, is only, uh, not along the marsh side, but actually on the commercial side, correct?
Yes. Yep. It's in front of the Beacon Motel.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Um, alternative transportation, a jitney, that came up before. Also parking improvements, we're going to see that on today's list. Dune creation, we held a workshop. There was no interest, so that's kind of fallen off. Sidewalks, we just talked about. Um, Gil's Neck Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Traffic from Trails. I think that, that's something that we still need to do. We were going to hold a, some sort of a workshop in early twenty twenty, so obviously.
Didn't happen.
Twenty twenty happened.
And what was the workshop about? What was the purpose of the workshop?
The, so we've got this challenge, and Bonnie kind of mentioned it in passing before, where we've got two trails that end at Gil's Neck Road. And Gil's Neck Road is, it takes a, a good bit of traffic. The right of way is narrow and the people coming off the trails, whether they're on bikes or on foot, have nowhere to go except to, to walk kind of in the road or be in the road.
Right.
And there are inherent conflicts there. So.
Correct.
Um, now for the Georgetown to Lewis Trail, I do think, you know, as, as we've talked about reconfiguring the Schley Lot and renaming it, um, there, and the potential, you know, we've talked about at the downtown parking committee kind of, you know, putting some bike racks there. We might be able to, as it relates to the Georgetown Lewis Trail, use Franklin Avenue as, you know, if you're going downtown, go this way, to alleviate that. But as it relates to the Junction Breakwater Trail, you don't really have that unless once they signalize Monroe, unless you try to divert people that way. So, um, the, the challenge is there are right of way issues. So it's not like we can just put a path somewhere. Um.
I think what we determined when we looked at that was that there is sufficient right of way until you get to Rota Line.
Right.
For Rota Line to Savannah Road, there is insufficient right of way to deal with it. Uh, there, there could be an off, an off-road, uh, addressing of the, for pedestrian and bicycle access from, uh, where the trail comes, where the rail, where the trail actually ends to, up to Rota Line. But from Rota Line in, it's a problem.
Is there any width of that right of way along Gil's Neck Road that is on the canal side of the road? Is there any meaningful right of way there?
No.
Not enough to do anything with.
Okay. Has anyone, do you know, has anyone ever floated the idea of making the section of Gil's Neck Road up to the corner of Savannah a one-way street? And thereby making, in effect, creating a pedestrian bike lane and then have a vehicular lane also, but only in one direction?
That has been mentioned, um, mainly by some of the property owners.
Right.
On, on Gil's Neck. Um, you know, the, the the challenge with one way, I'm assuming, well, and I shouldn't assume anything. My, my thought process on one way is that it would be going from traffic on, on Gil's Neck would go from Savannah out. So if you, if you do that, then you need to probably on Schley direct, you know, started at Schley and, and direct traffic.
Correct.
And then all of that traffic is going to end up on, um, on Franklin or Washington.
Right.
Which, so, so that was some of what we wanted to discuss in a workshop is, is this a feasible option?
Right.
But I, again, COVID happened and we didn't.
Sure.
Quite.
And, and the backup plan would be, of course, I think, is in the next sec, when White's Pond is developed, and I believe there's a section of White's Pond or that, you know, some section of White's Pond that's going to touch Gil's Neck Road, that that would in effect, that would be in the city, I believe. Is that correct? Do we have a?
Well, so their development plan does not go all the way down to Gil's Neck Road. It, it's only on the other side of the pond closest.
Okay, and that section between the pond and Gilznack Road, that's in the county again?
No, it's in the city, we just don't have a development plan for it.
Right, right, but we can anticipate, we can anticipate that they will want to build houses there, right, while a crop of houses.
I, I see Janelle just put on her headphones, so I think she's ready to tell us something.
Okay, let's hear it.
At this time. At this time, there are no proposed plans that have been submitted or discussed with the city. To further develop that portion of the property. They are just currently working on the property that is closer to Monroe Avenue and getting through that process.
You know, can we ask for that? Because we don't want to be.
Right, this is about planning, right?
Yeah, but they, they, they have not developed any plan for that section.
Okay, well, the other question is, Janelle, from your familiarity with the White's Pond project that. Is under your purview that you have seen, do they show any stub streets pointing in the direction of that? Parcel that is down by Gilznack Road?
No, because the pond is in the, in between the properties, so there's. They don't have any room to get a road through due to the pond's location.
Okay, so that would suggest then that there would not be interconnectivity between. The, that, that parcel that we're talking about down by Gilznack Road and the White's Pond.
Correct.
Okay, that's the answer then, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And then the, the next two issues, and this is actually the end of the list, growth and trail maintenance. Trail maintenance, at this point, I think that we've been addressing. Growth comes up again on. The, the list of priorities gathered for today.
Are the, the kind of growth that they're talking about there, is that growth of trails or other kinds of growth?
No, the development, that, all the development happening in and around Lewis.
I see, thank you.
So. So that's, that's the prior list, does, does anybody need to take a, a little break before we move on to? Today's list? Are we good to go?
Would you like a break?
I'm good. Everybody knows that my, my, my bladder has a timeframe after which I must pretty, take a break, but no, I'm good.
You've got your camel, your camel.
Exactly. So. So we've got a list of short-term and long-term priorities. Short-term, you know, really. Obviously, you know, the highest priorities need to, to the degree that they have a budgetary. Implication need to be addressed in the, the current or the upcoming budget, but I think really. Even the long-term, I think part of the. Problem is, and, and I think. Rob, were you the one who suggested you wanted to really focus more on the long-term? I think one of the council people suggested that to me. It wasn't you? I feel like somebody told me, but by looking at kind of what the priorities are for the coming year. We're not hitting the long-term priorities, which we need to start focusing on if we're ever going to, so. Do we want to start with short-term and, and some of them end up taking us to, you know. A starting point for long-term priorities and some, some ways it's hard to, to separate them. And. Rob, for each one, I can go through and tell you whether it was a. Staff person or a. Councilperson, and I apologize, and I can add that to the, the list and put it on later.
That'd be great, and also, how did you write, how did you order them? And are they?
You mean on this sheet, the sheet that I sent out?
Yes.
I ordered them based on how I typed them in, based on which questionnaire was on the top of the stack when I printed them all out. Yeah, they're not ranked. So, facilities, we have a number of, of short-term things. One is adequate city building facilities for employees. Develop of, I, I'm going to tell you that all four of these were submitted by department managers. So. Adequate city building facilities for employees. Develop a facilities master plan. Update, street signs and office upgrades, and that, that came from the maintenance department, and the dump pad and storage pad. I'll give you a little perspective on the dump pad and storage pad, we had planned, we have. No good place when they do the street sweeping, the leaf vac. I feel like they're, a beach rake, we have no good place for them to. Dump and store until it goes out to the dump. And we started and, and Charlie did a design for us for a concrete pad that would be. On the parcel adjacent to where the, the garage is, the street's garage, which is if you're going toward Washington Avenue. It's the building on the left-hand side at the end there, which is beyond its useful life, we, we figured out when it. When we looked at potentially putting our break room in there.
I'd like to put an endorsement for this because this also touches on an issue that the mayor and I are dealing with, which is parking. And where they're using sort of a beach rake and some of the staging area now is where we're looking at by the Daily Mart.
Right.
Potentially enhance that parking, so I, I'd like us to look at this one because it could help. Another issue that we're facing, which is parking.
Right, and I absolutely agree, and here comes the twist. The, the property that we had designed to put it on is the old, is it the?
Well.
The old well, the old water treatment plant. Which is one of the properties that was purchased by the city for the benefit of the Lewis Board of Public Works. And it's one that the deed has now been updated, that it has both the city and the Board of Public Works on the deed. And the, the board initially was. Amenable. To us putting the pad there, and I think it got a little complicated as some of the other issues between the city and the board have. Heated up, would, would you agree, Mayor, that's?
I would, you've said it well, thank you.
So. We have not been able to do that. I think it also then comes down to this other challenge that we have in that. There's very little space for the city. To. Grow its. Facilities, we, you know, whether it's our maintenance facilities, you know, vehicle storage, equipment storage. The, the bulk of the space that's available is really that space that is jointly. Held by the city and the board, and the board really. Has a sense of ownership. So. So, yes. So. I, I think we all agree that it's a, a priority, that the question is, given the, the space we have, how do we address it? So. Go ahead, Tim, sorry.
No, I. I can't, it's, it's, so it seems, I think what you're suggesting is, is that until we can resolve this matter with the BPW. We're kind of in a holding pattern, is that correct? We don't know what we can do for a staging area and for storing this equipment? Is that, is that where, is that right?
I, I would agree, you know, quite honestly, I think all of that. Land along Schley, whether it's city. Operations or BPW operations, i- if we. Did a plan for, you know, one, removal of the things that aren't used anymore. I, I think it could all be more efficiently used if we could work together on it.
There's a lot of land there that is, a lot of it's empty.
And, and quite honestly, some of what's empty is. Increasingly an eyesore.
Right.
Yeah, and we have a responsibility to our residents and homeowners in that area who. That's cheek and jowl with, you know, with the people who live in that area.
Right.
Right?
Well, and it's, it's also right along the trail, which is now highly visible. Because of the amount of use on the trail.
And the other, on the other side, on the other side of Schley Avenue, it backs up to the Presbyterian Church's cemetery, so you. There, you know, and there's a fence there, so you're not going to have. Too many issues there, but it's still, you're right, Jim, it needs to be, it needs to be tidied up.
Do we have any, is there any reason to think that there is any kind of a contamination in that area? That would need to be addressed by the BPW and/or the city from prior usage, you know, it's. It sounds like it was semi-industrial or industrial in some.
Well, it was the electric.
Electric generation.
Generation, so that, that often has some, so I, I don't know if they've looked at that yet.
I think that was pretty much cleaned up when they did that building. The one, the old building, the brick building, Rick might know more about that, Rick, do you recall what they did when they took out the generators? Did they do any remediation inside? Here's.
I know they were looking to, to see where they're at right now, no, I'm not sure right now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do think that this was looked at at one point, and that they didn't find anything. There were a couple of tanks around the back of that building that I think there was some question about, but my best recollection is that. They, they did not find a, anything close to a Brownfield situation over there.
Okay.
And those tanks are gone. That's the area.
Gone for a long time.
They have, that's the area that Lewis and Bloom uses for storing their plant material. So they've been gone for a long time.
Right, and, and remember.
And the, the old buildings themselves, they're, are they free of asbestos?
I think they're free of everything at this point, they're pretty, it's, it's pretty much a shell inside there.
Is that right?
Certainly, the, the, there was a work crew from, you know, the Dirty Hands Gang. From the overfalls worked in there extensively when they were restoring the Montomoy.
Right.
So I think if there was a health hazard issue, that would have been flagged before.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Most area.
Well, they already, it had to have been addressed because they, they had leased that building to a Levo, who was going to put in.
Right.
That battery storage capability, and so it had to have been addressed before that lease was done, unfortunately, it fell apart.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm talking about the power generation side of it.
What you're talking about, yeah.
Not the big cube side of it.
Yeah.
But rather closer to Washington.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess my, my comment on this in, in general is a point two on this is, is master facilities plan. Is that a, is that a realistic, like, short-term goal? Because it sounds like if we set up a master plan of, again, cleaning up the area and organizing it better. That could accomplish a couple of the things that are, that are actually on this. Short-term list with respective, you know, facilities. Is that, is that in the works? Is there already sort of a draft of a facilities master plan?
There really isn't, and, and maybe, maybe something that look, that's a joint venture between the city and the board. That looks at the Schley Avenue property would be phase one of a facilities master plan. And if we develop. A, a plan for how to more efficiently. And beneficially use that area, then I think we're in a better position to say. Do we need more land for city facilities in the future? So, so maybe.
Is that, Mayor, is that a potential committee that we might, that way you could have?
I think it's a potential discussion as we resolve, as we work through this resolution that hopefully we'll get to soon. I think the outgrowth of, of one of the resolutions would be that the two of us would work together on, meaning the board and the city. Would work together on development, looking at the whole. The whole industrial portion of the, of the city and the board's operation located on Schley Avenue.
Do you think that, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say, because to me, that, that pad area is very, seems a very simple thing that could. Really unlock thing, you know, a couple of other issues, and it's a pretty, seemed a pretty simple thing that Rick is asking for.
Right, well, and.
I'd like to figure a way to help, you know, and I realize that there's issues with BPW, but, I mean. It, it seems like something that, again, could, could unlock the key to a couple of things.
Right.
Is that something that we could, do we need to wait until the issues with BPW are resolved, or could we initiate this? I mean, we need to initiate kind of the re. The flipping of the, the area Franklin and Schley, should we? Bring it all up together?
Flipping of Franklin and Schley, and this can be put together in one conversation. And that, but the other side of the street, I think is a, is a bigger topic. And if we can get, if we get them to the table to talk about this, the, the trail side of the road, I think we can go the other way.
Well, and.
Go ahead.
Well, all I was going to say is, I don't think we have a good understanding, at least I don't, as to what. What uses the BPW may have planned for, for this whole area, so. You know, it could be that there really isn't that much conflict when all is said and done, but, but obviously that, that requires a, a discussion and, and a joint undertaking.
Right, well, we have, Charlie has come up with a, a design now for the, the flipping of the Schley Avenue parking lot. So we have that worked out to present, to have a, sit down and have a discussion with them. Because one of their concerns has been making sure that they still have a lay-down area in there. And one of our concerns is making sure the lay-down area doesn't interfere with the residential neighborhood. So we're trying to, I think the design that Charlie has come up with is, would address both of those concerns, would alleviate. The disruption that people on Franklin are experiencing and keep all the entrances, ingress, egress to the lay-down area that the. Board wants to use off of Schley Avenue.
Do we want to maybe, and I know you can't take action today, but do we want to maybe? Pitch the idea to the board that we develop a committee of, you know, two members of council, two members of the board. And then, I don't know, four-person committee sounds like a disaster. You know, maybe you do. Add a, a person from the neighborhood.
I think you do. Got a couple of good ones over there.
And then, and, and really, pardon?
I would say someone from Rick's team, maybe either Rick or Allison to participate in that.
Well, I would think they would want their team as well, so maybe it would be. Staff would be ex officio, but maybe we pull somebody from the neighborhood, and we have a very open discussion about what's the. Best use of, of that that meets the objectives of both the city, and if we need to develop some sort of a written. Document that governs it. That could be the outcome.
Well, we heard from.
Right.
We heard from Donna at the last meeting that we had with, when we talked about capital projects, and then. But we also have Mr. Morris, who's been, who brought us, you know, the drawing of what he'd like to see happen to the Schley Avenue lot, so. We have a couple of people that.
But Mr. Morris is not a full-time resident, so it would probably be better to have a full-time resident.
Absolutely, I agree.
Engaged in that.
Yeah. There are a couple of other.
I do like the idea that. Go ahead.
There are a couple of other people that live on, on Washington that have been pretty outspoken, who back up to our, to our current existing buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, I do like the idea that. That we, that there be a discussion with BPW, we bring them to the table, we come to the table with them, and that, eh, we move towards. A master plan for that entire, everything from Jeff, Jefferson, is it? Franklin, I'm sorry, from Franklin to Washington, that there be a master plan for that, for that acreage in there. And, and this parking lot that's been, the downtown parking committee is considering. It's just a piece of the whole overall master. is considering, it's just a piece of the whole overall master plan.
So I guess while we're talking about facilities, do we want to talk about the things that are on there as long-term issues as well? So that. So one is developing a plan for city buildings to prepare for future growth, identifying parcels or properties to potentially acquire, inventory and capital spending plan, which we've already talked about. Relocate, here's one, relocating BPW and/or police staff to reduce building crowding and parking issues. New maintenance and facilities building. Management plan for city buildings. And that, that is listed as long-term, but that's really something that's on Allison's short-term list. And then year-round restroom for Beach Two. I know the last three are staff, relocating BPW and/or police are staff. I'm looking at, at the others. I can tell you in a minute. Developing a plan for city buildings to prepare for future growth is staff.
And is that underway, Anne Marie, at this time?
No.
Okay.
Identifying parcels, that's mine.
Okay.
Way to go, Andrew.
Can I just suggest that a couple of these have to do with long-term staffing increases?
Right.
So we really need to have a personnel look ahead as to what those increases might be before we look to where to house people.
Right. You're right. And.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
I was just going to say, we also are on another channel, we're talking about or considering, you know, renovations to the police department. And those are going to, I can imagine that's going to be a big ticket item. And if we're talking about relocating the police department to some other location, then that needs to be part of this discussion if we're going to repurpose that space.
Right. It's some, some of the discussion that we had with GMB when we did the walkthrough, you know, again, and some of this comes down to the programming discussion that, that Morgan mentioned that we need to, to have. Is, do we, there are basic things that need to be done regardless of who occupies the space. It's, it's pretty dingy. So, you know, there are a number of things that need to be done regardless of who inhabits the space. And then the, the, some of the more structural issues. I'm not sure, and, and I don't, I guess there's a question for council. Does council see that as, do, you know, do we, I think that on the long term, we acknowledge and have had some degree of discussion that at some point, the city administrative function will need more of the building. So the question is, does that mean that the board finds another location, or does that mean the police department finds another location? And, you know, quite frankly, Darren has asked that question. Darren, you know, from the board's perspective, I think they want to know, at what point do they need to start looking for a facility? So I think one question for council is, if, as we move to where there are more space needs in City Hall for the administrative functions of the city, which entity would we look to relocate? Because I think that in fairness, the board needs to, to know that.
We don't have to. We don't have to. I mean, I'll make this pitch yet again.
Yep.
If we move city meetings to the Rollins Center, and we're about to spend a great deal of money to create bathrooms there and other improvements, we have plenty of room if we repurpose what is now council chambers. Nobody has to get.
The other thing I'd like to suggest, the other thing I'd like to suggest is that, oh, who's talking? Okay, the other thing I was going to suggest is, I think if we've learned anything this year, we have learned that it is possible for our city staff to remain productive in a virtual environment. And it is very likely that for employee retention, for just the wonderful flexibility that virtual work allows, that it's quite possible that our demands for office space, traditional office space, will be reduced from what it is, has been the practice in the past. It should be considered. You know, I found that, I have not spent much time in the City Hall, but I've spent more time in the City Hall offices since the election than ever before. And what, one of the things that has really surprised me is the, the very, what I consider very generous accommodations for the employees. It's amazing how many employees have their own work, their own office. And coming from the private world as I do, that's, that's a very unusual work experience. I like it, but it's also not necessarily a very efficient way of taking care of staff, meeting their, their needs. That's just an observation I'll share.
I think these are very good observations. I think the virtual idea particularly is appealing.
You know, when I think about it, Rob, I, I, I'm going to be on, putting myself on a limb, and Robin, please jump in on this one. When I think of the people, the guys, the people on the staff who are working, for example, as building inspectors, it seems to me they, their office should be in the city vehicle that they drive around, that their connectivity should all be based on Wi-Fi, that they have very much the same kind of capability that the police department has with respect to access to records and so forth. And they work from their vehicles. And yes, they could stop into the office and pick up, you know, whatever they need, tools or what have you. But their work is really about being in the field and taking care of business in the field. Robin, you have a comment?
Yeah. We have, we have discussed this, Anne Marie and Ellen Lorraine, we've all discussed this, you know, in, in general, it's like with Steve. Steve is the code official, probably spends eighty to ninety percent of his time out in the field. Currently, we do not have capabilities to do connectivity to our software system from the field. It's being worked on. But if, just as an example, if Steve goes out and finds someone doing a job, he has to come back to the office or make a phone call to see if that person has a business license or a building permit. Then he has, if they don't, then he has to go back out and talk to the individuals about that. It would just be a lot better just doing it right from the field. As far as, yeah, as far as our inspectors, yes, the inspections are done out in the field. Speaking with some of the individuals from the county, the county inspectors, they have capabilities to, once they do an inspection, to automatically put that right into the system right in the field. And that's, rate, real time gets updated at the office.
Yeah.
Yes, there is, the inspectors do spend time out in the field, but we also have to be in the office for plan reviews and things like that. So the inspector's probably a little bit more of a, I don't say fifty-fifty, but like with the code enforcement, is more out in the field most of the time.
Yeah. Okay. And so your, one of your problems is the Wi-Fi connectivity?
It's, it's not Wi-Fi, it's that our admin system, where all of the licenses and permits are housed, is on our server. We are looking to go to a cloud-based admins. And
I see.
We, Ellen Lorraine, do you want to talk about kind of where we stand with that? And with that, we would be able to provide it from, you know, we would have to get air cards, you know, there, there are things that we'd have to do, which is not, I don't think, a problem. We actually, actually, we have cell phones with hotspots, so that should probably work. But Ellen Lorraine, do you want to talk about where we are with that?
So we reached out to, is to see what is required to transition to the cloud-based system. And we are working through our current IT to go down that path further to see if there was any issues on our server end and on the admin's end to make sure there is compatibility. This was budgeted in the current fiscal year. And as you can imagine, laptops are very hard to find. And those that meet the requirements to enable this capability are even harder to find. So we've not abandoned it. We are trying to work on it in our current circumstances.
I see. Thank you. Yeah. And I, I would think that that would be, this kind of technology would be helpful for, I'm sorry, the name is slipping me right now, but I believe it's a woman who's now in charge of the parks department.
Janet.
Am I mistaken?
Janet.
Janet, thank you. I would think this would be very helpful for someone such as, you know, in her position, who I anticipate is spending some time possibly of each day going from park to park, making sure that things are well-maintained, that we don't have a safety issue, the trash has been picked up, et cetera, et cetera. You know, the grass has been cut. And it would be helpful for her as well to have that kind of connectivity.
Right, yeah. She's been spending a lot of time out, out and about, so. All right. Are there any, anything else? So, I mean, let, let me just ask this. One of the things that was brought up was the potential of relocating BPW and/or police staff out of the building. I'm, I feel like I'm hearing that council's not seeing that as a, as something that we're going to hit in the next ten years.
I think Bonnie's approach is very wise. We're spending the money to enhance the, that facility and for other, for other reasons as well. But the net benefit is that it's, becomes a place that you can hold public events such as, you know, council meetings and committee meetings. And I, I, I like her thought process there, repurpose the existing.
I do too. I'll jump in on you, Andrew. I think it's a great idea. I think it, reality is, over the last couple of years, I cannot tell you how many meetings I attended in City Hall in the council chambers where I was, arrived on time prior to the meeting, and I ended up giving up my seat to stand in the lobby so that someone else who needed to sit down could sit. And we, and.
Parking there, it's, it's a better option for public meetings.
Right. And the time, I know Anne Marie in the past has spoken about, I believe there's an internet connectivity problem at, in the Rollins Center at this time. Do I understand that correctly?
Um, the issue is that we're on the LHS internet, but they've been very amenable to working with us on that.
Okay. But with that, does their connectivity restrict our ability to stream from that facility from the volume?
No. I was concerned that it might, but their IT person looked at it, and they said that there would not be an issue.
Okay, terrific. Because I was going to say, if, if that was an issue, and if we needed to have a separate drop put in, the time to do it is when the bathroom work is being done, if we go forward with that project.
And, you know, again, with the investment being made in the restrooms, I think that, you know, it's been a little awkward in the past because we've had to have LHS have staff there. And if we're able to segment the meeting room from the, the rest of the building, then I think that we're, obviously, that's no longer an issue.
Sure. For security reasons too, it's better.
Right.
Anne Marie, before you move on from city facilities, the third bullet is inventory and capital spending plan. Could you speak to that briefly?
Um, so that is what was put down. And, and I think, and I don't know if anybody remembers, if, if you put, you know, if, if this was your, your thing that you put down. I can't see who. I can only see if it's Stafford or.
It was me.
Oh, okay. Do you want to talk about it, Bonnie?
Sure. This is, this is an issue that's come up, came up from the finance committee. It's been something that council voted on as a, as a priority. And I can't remember if it was in a strategy session or a regular session, that, that the inventory part and the capital spend part go hand in hand because you have to know what you got before you got to know what you have to fix. And we've talked about this for several years. I believe at one point, a vendor that would be capable of doing the inventory was identified. And it's just, you know, look, I understand this isn't one of those front burner issues, but now that we're talking about facilities maintenance plan, that is a subset of a capital spend.
Absolutely.
So, so I put it on there because I, I think it's, it's something that we've needed for a long time, and, and I didn't want it to get lost in the shuffle.
Right. I, I agree with that, Bonnie. It's, it's something you have mentioned from time to time, and it does seem important.
It is important.
And, and I think that really the asset listing, which we do have kind of the first draft from the auditor, I think the asset listing is the first piece to developing the capital investment plan.
Who was the next piece?
Pardon me?
Who would be the next piece to that?
Well, so having the full capital asset listing, based on that, you start to look at condition, life expectancy, when certain investments were made, and then you can start to prioritize the, the next investments.
There are consultants who provide reserve studies, as you know. Maybe it would be worth asking one of them to, to help us figure out what we need to set aside in order to address our long-term capital maintenance challenges. But I think you have to have your, your list of, of your assets and what you think of life expectancy of them before you can do that. Oh, sure. I was asking about the next step.
Right, right.
Right, no, I think that's a good point. And all these things are all wrapped up together. I mean, the discussion we just had about, you know, can we squeeze more space out of City Hall to, to go to that long-term employee expansion that we, I mean, all these things need to be sort of sequenced.
Right.
And, and put, you know, and put in place. But, you know, the, the only way to have that happen is to start. And I think Ted's right. I mean, we, we need to know what we have. And then you, then the next step is, what have you got and what kind of shape is it in? That's how you figure out what your maintenance is. And how does your, how do your current facilities dovetail with your, with your staff requirements? I mean, I, and just, I just want to double back for a second to the idea of moving some component out of City Hall. I really think that that should be avoided, if it can be, because there are lots of enormous advantages to having all your employees in the same building. And there's obvious advantages in being able to have easy access back and forth between the board and, between the BPW and the city. So let's, you know, so there's, there's lots of things that need to play into this. But knowing, you know, deciding what, what needs to be straightened out first is, and then how you go about it is, is key to having any kind of rational approach.
Right. Well, if you want to improve, if you want to improve the communication between all of us, you've got to keep, get, stay in the same building as much as possible.
Right. And, and I've said that, I mean, I've said that to press and to Darren, when the issue, you know, when the discussion of do they need to look elsewhere, I would not want to see BPW move out because regardless of where all this discussion goes. I would not want to see BPW move out because regardless of where all this discussion goes, there, there is an important relationship that, you know, we need to, the, the fact that we can walk down the hall and talk to Darren and that, you know, we interact in the break room or whatever. I, I mean, I think that that's an important component of the relationship between the two entities.
Whereas the police department, they keep themselves to themselves anyway. Unless we can somehow work, work through that, that might be a, something to consider.
Well, I think we, we have this one object that we talked about already, and that is, do they need a separate kitchen?
Right.
You know, I mean, could they not using, couldn't we not all be using the same kitchen? The kitchen that we have is very, our break room, whatever you want to call it, is very, very large for the small staff that we're talking.
It is.
So, I, Anne Marie, this idea about the year-round restroom at Beach Two, where did that come from?
Oh, I hear, I, I think that came from Rick's department. Rick?
Okay. Well, my thinking was there, and I put that on long-term because when we were talking about doing a year-round bathroom, my opinion at that time was doing Beach Two to have one like we did at the Trailhead and have a bathroom turn so the police can see the front of it. And it's easier to maintain, easier to, right now Beach One is hard, even when it was redone and keeping it heated because it's such an old bathroom and it's big. It, it, it's hard to, to keep maintaining it, which we are. But my idea down the road would have been that it's better to close Beach One and have a bathroom like we have at Trailhead. Like I said, easier to maintain, turn it around so the sand stops coming into the bathrooms every winter, during the summer. And that was my, my idea for that long-term, that's why.
Okay, so then that would be a complete replacement of that bathroom?
Yes, because even, I know we put some work in the Beach Two now. We've had to do some work in it. And as you know, the center of it to get in, we had to stick Allison in there and Si.
Right.
It was going up and down between pipes sideways and basically trying to turn wrenches in it. There's no room in there. And especially when they put the heater, the tank in there, it even took more room away from that. So like I said, the bathrooms are a little bit easier to maintain. Trailhead, Mary Vessel, Swan and Dale, if we have like that at Beach Two, and like I said, turn it around so the police can see it. But right now it's hidden on the backside. Too many people do things back there, use the bathroom when it's closed back there. Not, it's going to stop it, but at least it's, it's, you can see it now with cops.
All right. Thanks for the explanation. So that's completely, that's a long-term facility, a long-term goal for sure because you have to talk about taking that building out and replacing it.
Yes.
You'd have to elevate it.
That's the kind of thing that's perfect for a capital spending plan.
Exactly.
So, all right. Anything else on facilities? All right. So going back to the short-term list, COVID. So we've got several things, maintaining vigilance.
Let's just hope that's short-term.
Right. Well, and somebody.
Let's define short-term.
Right. Well.
Anne Marie, seriously, what do you, when you, when you're speaking of short-term, are you talking about the next calendar year? What is the short-term?
Short-term I see as the next budget year. So.
Budget year.
So something that we really want to focus on in the next, starting, you know, in the next 12 months. Long-term, you know, it could be anywhere from the five-year horizon to, you know, the 50-year horizon. And I think that's where it kind of gets a little dicey on.
Sure, fuzzy.
True does.
Um, so maintaining vigilance, maybe supporting isolated people, having us all survive. The COVID recovery and budget process and assessing the negative impacts of lost revenue. Do you want me to go through whether, who, what was council versus what was?
I bet they were all council.
I think so.
Yeah, I think they probably were. I don't think there's, I mean, I think we all would agree that this is a long, this is a very short-term goal that, you know, we have to adhere to.
Yeah, we just got to, we just got to do it. It doesn't, it's not.
I don't think it's a matter of much debate over that. You've got to do it.
There's one, there's, the, the third and fourth bullet seemed to me are more than just, you know, endure, but things we need to address. Do you have any thoughts on those, Anne Marie?
Um, so I, I will say they're not all council because addressing the negative impacts of lost revenue was brought up by a department manager. But I, I think that, um, that, you know, we need to look, you know, there, there have been a lot of aspects of the economy that have been affected. And I don't know that we know for sure what the revenue picture is going to be. You know, we, we could end up with higher gross receipt rental because the, the rental season seems to have been extended. But we don't know. And I think part of it is there's a lot of uncertainty. If businesses are not being successful, we could see a big dip in the, the business license revenue. So, and, and then, you know, so there's the revenues to the city, but the revenues to the city are very much tied to the economic success of the private sector in the city. So you kind of have, you know, two major drivers in terms of the, the local economy, and that's the, the rental market and the, the businesses, the, you know, the central business district and.
I think the one benefit is that we've planned, we've lived, we've gone through COVID this year. So we've seen the ways that's affected us. And I think if we plan for the negatives, that's the way to go. And then if we have upticks, like you said, in, in areas where we don't anticipate additional revenues coming in, then that's, that's a bonus.
That's great. That's gravy. Yeah.
But, I mean, I guess, and then the, the, as it relates to business, you know, the, the other piece is the economic health of the community. We don't really know because we know, I mean, we do know that this is going to go on probably through mid-2021. We don't know how many, so far we've been fortunate, I think. But do we, we don't know if that'll continue in terms of our businesses.
You're, you're absolutely right. Some may just be hanging on till now and a few more months might be the, the final death nail for them. So, yeah, that's a good point.
I think that's going to happen to some of them. I think that what I'm hearing from Betsy in terms of membership renewal, she's getting some pushback on membership renewal for the chamber. So I think you can assume that we are going to take a financial, some of our businesses are going to take a financial. So, but we also, there's another issue, and that's parking revenue as well. You know, we, we cut off three hours of parking this, this summer, which thankfully, because we extended it into the evening, didn't adversely affect us as great as it could have had we not extended it to the evening hours. But if the restaurants are closed to 30%, there's not a reason for people to come downtown.
Right.
And if that stays on, which is where we are right now, then you can expect that there will be a change in the revenue from parking meters.
And I, I guess one question, and this is something that, that affects this current fiscal year because it's a, it's a January, February renewal. Is there anything we want to do as it relates to business licenses? I mean, some business licenses, it, it's really the retail and the restaurants that are hurting. I, I don't know that the small fee that they pay to the city is going to make a, a big difference. But is there something we want to do in, in that regard? Or is it even, again, it?
I mean, as we approach season, we, we may re-approach with the options of, as you did last year, around, you know, would it make sense to utilize sidewalks and streets, could, you know, there are areas that we can open up. But last year they didn't seem to, to want to take that option. But they may, this coming year, so I think just in working with them in, in those regards, allowing open container. Maybe we, maybe we lack some of the amplified music to, to allow them outside, to just more outside opportunities. There, there may be things that we can do to, to relax, relax some of the ordinances that may be in place. But they have, they want to, they'll, they're going to have to participate in that too. Because like we, we said, you know, last year, there, there was the option for them to expand into the sidewalks and things. And they, they didn't want to take that. So we just have to be flexible, I think, with, in, in working with our businesses.
Okay. All right. So in.
Look at all those ideas with, if you do them temporarily, how can you pull them back? I'm not saying they shouldn't be done, but how do you pull them back at what point, you know?
Yeah, certainly. You, I mean, we, I think we've done it with date, you know, you put in certain effective dates. You know, you say between this month and that month.
I can tell you, I, I've learned that the county collection of real estate tax on, on accommodations, the county, when they enacted that, adopted that it would end when the governor withdrew his, his closure, his emergency orders. So that's, that's how they dealt with that. So there is a date certain that it ends. I mean, it's open, but it's, it's going to end when that happens.
But I think from what I've heard in the last 24 hours in the news cycle, that we should anticipate that 2021 is going to be, we're going to be basically closed down for the entire year 2021, with or without inoculation. We should not expect a return to normalcy. We could be hopeful, but it's certainly not going to be in the first two quarters of the year. And it's doubtful that it will be achieved through 2021. So I like the idea that Andrew has suggested, and that is that we, A, we be very flexible and we engage our retailers, the restaurateurs, soon, immediately to get them to begin to think about us as A, partners and what we can do to make them successful. You know, we don't want to lose these businesses. We don't want to lose the restaurants. And our, our town's success is very much their success. And I think we should.
I think you've got that reversed. I think their success is very much the town's success.
Okay, okay. Well, I was not speaking as a councilperson for a minute, I think.
It's symbiotic. It's symbiotic.
It's symbiotic. Exactly. You know, what I can't help but think is, is that with the good work that you all are doing with your beach committee, I'm sorry, the park, downtown parking committee, excuse me, downtown parking committee. I'm wondering if by you all having identified space, you know, X number of spaces that could be created, that, that might actually relieve, give us the opportunity to create a, if you will, pedestrian-friendly area on Second Street to allow commerce to be moved out onto the sidewalks, into the streets and keep cars away. But it would be a safe way for people to enjoy a meal, to shop, to just walk around safely.
I would, I, I'll, we could talk about, we have a sidebar conversation about closing Second Street to pedestrian. Every town that has done that has destroyed their downtown business district.
I see.
Look at Winchester, look at, you could go around the country.
Well, so I, I think it's, it might be, where, where that approach is successful is where it's closed for, say, specific events or a specific evening or something. But yeah, when it's continually, you, you, and we've talked about this in the beach, or I'm sorry, in the downtown parking committee, you just can't get away from the fact that people want to park outside the store they want to go into. And that, once you take that ability away, there are certain businesses that will just not survive it.
Yeah.
I see.
Can I just say parenthetically, if you see me going in and out on the video, it's because I'm, I'm having some interconnectivity issues. So it's, it's not a comment on you all. It's just so I can, don't get bounced off. I mean, I, 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 I think, Tim, I've always thought that in concept, walking malls are great. But I have to say, in reality, they don't seem to work.
Right.
You know, maybe people have changed and, and their expectations have changed. But I, I wouldn't want to risk the viability of the downtown businesses to run that experiment.
I understand. There are, they can be successful, and I also understand that they, they can be a challenge. And they can only be successful if the infrastructure is in place to support vehicular traffic or have alternate for, ways of getting people into those, into those districts, into the shopping districts, into the restaurant districts. You know, Charlottesville has, has had one for decades now. And I have reason to believe it's pretty successful.
Well, my, my time in Charlottesville was many, many, many years ago, but it, it didn't seem to work. And you've also got a university there. You know, you've got a bunch of kids. We've got a bunch of people who look like us.
Excuse me?
Andrew's certainly an exception.
Participants.
Platinum. I keep telling you, Bonnie, it's platinum. It's not white.
We all now know the, the perils of hair dye.
Excuse me, I have to wet my face.
All right. Well, I do think there is, there is an important discussion to be had between the businesses in the city. And that's largely through the chamber.
Well, we.
I have a question. Let me ask you a question of Andrew and Ellen Lorraine. I'm putting you on short notice here. What percentage of our budget is, does, do the business licenses represent? You know, or percentage or just a dollar figure? What is this?
I believe they're around $150,000, but let me see here real quick.
It's a very small proportion.
Very minor.
Because, because our business licenses are, are so.
I understand. I understand. Those business licenses would include people who work from their homes, correct? They would have business licenses. Yeah, theoretically. But, but these, do we have any way of knowing how much of that $150,000 is generated by brick and mortar kind of businesses?
We can figure that out.
Okay. That might be helpful.
I mean, and, you know, so.
I mean, reality is, what do we, what value do we get? Or what, what do we, what do those, these property owners get from us, from the city by paying a license?
Well, they're in a very desirable location, for one.
Yeah, I understand. But for example, we, we are not, are we expecting our city government, our inspectors to go to these properties and make sure that they are safe, that they are compliant with fire code? For example, that, you know, they're, those kinds of issues?
We, we do not have a commercial inspection program.
I don't think that's it, Tim. I think it's more, the, the city maintains the parks, the streets, provides the, the.
Sure.
The police. That, you know, that, that benefit the, the, the businesses. And, and so they're asked to make a small contribution towards all the services they get.
And, and I understand that, Bonnie. And it's a, it's a flat license fee, is that correct?
Well, depending on the category of business, it's not.
But either the size of the business or the type of business.
Correct.
Size and type. Okay.
One fee for the whole year.
And they don't pay, they don't pay, like, the landlords don't pay any kind of gross receipts rental tax or anything like that the way a residential renter does or landlord does. So it's, it's a, it's a miniscule.
So it's, it's, it's a miniscule ask.
Yes, I understand, Bonnie. I understand. Thank you. Okay.
To Tim's point, if we want to get into people's pockets, you know, you could start taxing or charging fees to people like me, or like essentially working from home, because we may see, we may see more of that and people coming to town. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to pay additional fees myself, but it might be a good revenue generator.
Right. And isn't that really how we're, that's how we're going to stabilize our local economy, isn't it? We should be encouraging the Andrews of the world to come live in Lewis, plug into the internet and be productive. And it seems to me that that would be a logical step and that we would beat the drum for people to come live here full time and also pay a licensing, a license to, to have a business in their homes. That's pretty normal. I think that's what, I'm sorry.
Because I work for another, for a company essentially, so who's going to pay that? My, my company, me, you know?
And
Hey, the check's in the mail, Andrew. We don't care who pays it. Just pay the money.
But, but the challenge is you go that way and then do does Andrew's company then pay a business license to 300 different municipalities because they have that many people telecommuting? So it, it does get challenging.
It's dicey.
Well, but I, but again, I think this, I do think that this is what we should be, one thing that we should be looking at is considering is that business is going to be done differently. After COVID, I don't know what it was done before COVID. And that is going to be more remote work being done and done well. And so there will be proliferation of home offices. And, you know, if there, if those people are, those same residents are able to qualify with IRS to be able to write off a certain amount of square footage for, for home offices, then it seems to me the city should be able and willing and able to, to include a licensing fee, some kind of a fee.
Is that something the finance committee should take up, Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, like I said, I don't, it seems like I'm working against myself here, but Tim's right. I think that's where the economy is going. So my way, we need to look to monetize. I mean, another way that, you know, I've talked about is some kind of work share place that maybe is co-sponsored. City and county, and that's a way that you get into their pockets.
I love that idea.
But I think, you know, there, there needs to be a focus, you know, not a focus, but we need to pay attention to the fact that the, yeah, work, work environments are changing. And how can we potentially get revenue from it? Because they're going to move, or you can tell from the real, the real estate market didn't really dip here, because I think people are looking at, how can I work outside of an urban setting that's, and nice place to live and low tax and all that.
Right. Well, so I know my, for instance, I know my neighbor is reluctantly working from home, you know, obviously it creates challenges for a lot of people. And because it's working so well and her company has outgrown office space and needs to build more office space or rent more office space. They have said, you are going to be working from home indefinitely, pretty much this is your new arrangement. So that we don't have to build more office space. So they're saving money.
Well, right. They are. So what do we do with you, Emery? You going to start paying a fee to Dover to have your own office?
I plan to get back on my feet.
Well, I think we, you know, we can refer that to the finance committee for consideration.
Yep.
All right, let's move on then.
All right, code process improvements. And these were, the first five were raised by staff. And the last one was raised by a councilperson. So
Before we get into these, as the, as the, as the young person here in this group, I'm, I'm going to ask for a bathroom break here. Can we, because this, this one's, I think we're going to get into the deep
I'll second that.
How about we stop, how about we pause here?
Okay. Five minute recess?
Fine. So we'll see you all at 25 of.
I'm a heavy coffee guy. I, I get, I get my first one at the bake, at the bake shop in Lewis, and then I have, I get a pot going and then I just that way.
Well, I, I switched between coffee and water all morning, so I'm, and I just got another, I, at lunchtime, I start sparkling water when I'm home anyway.
Hey, Rick, before we get started in the meeting, I'd like to set up an appointment with you to come over and do a tour of the Schley Avenue area with you.
Anytime.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be back Monday.
Okay.
Rick's quarantining at the moment, so he's
Okay. Thank you.
Good to see you without your Cowboys gear on today, Rick.
Is Rick a Cowboys fan?
Yes, he is.
I did not know that.
Yes, I am. All Philadelphia except for football. Just never liked the Eagles back in the days.
Well, I'm an Eagles fan. I don't like them right now, so.
Yeah, exactly. Cowboys ain't any better, so I guess we're in the same boat.
I'm a Ravens fan. Didn't we beat the Cowboys this week?
Nobody's talking.
No, we beat, I'm sorry, we beat the Steelers this week.
No, you did beat the Cowboys, yes.
Okay.
How about that team from Washington? They're going to call it. It's actually showing a spark of life.
Hail to that team from Washington.
Whatever they're called.
My youngest son roots for Washington, just to get my goat as an Eagles fan.
It's just the beginning, Andrew, just the beginning.
My, my family bleeds purple, every one of them.
Well, you've got a hell of a quarterback. I mean, Jackson is amazing.
Say we need Rob yet. Emery, how long did you, how long did you run this Zoom for today?
So I had put it out that we could go till two. You know, I don't know, I don't know what you all want to do about lunch.
Oh, I'm thinking that maybe we, I don't know what everybody else feels, but I'm thinking that, you know, at some point, we're going to get brain dead here.
Yes.
And so I don't know very good ones if we try to go till two or not. But we may have, we may not get through all of this. Today, we may have to schedule something in early January or, you know, to finish this conversation.
I think we've gotten to some of our really meaty issues, so.
I think we have, but some of the others, I'm not sure, you know, you just don't know.
Right. Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, we may not get through it all. So, all right, so we have all the council members back. Do you want to?
Let's go ahead and get started again.
All right. So our next our, our next group of short term are code and process improvements. And all except for the last one were submitted by staff. Let's see, so a lot of them, so, so I'm going to give you, again, this is anonymous, but some of them, I, I think honestly probably came through planning and building. Because I think that's where most of these challenges, most of these challenges exist. Especially as it relates to codes and streamlining the process and
Would Robin be in a position to kind of talk us through that on a day to day of maybe what he sees as areas that we could streamline?
Yeah. Robin, are you back? He may not be back. He might have gotten caught up. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
So I don't know if any of these were yours or not, but when I read them, they, they strike me as, as very related to building and, and planning.
Yeah, and, and some of these, I, I did put them, some of them down. What we're doing now, the planning commission is going through a lot of stuff and the action plan, some committee for the planning commission has identified a lot of these areas also. And they've, they're on that list, I think that was sent to Mayor Council, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it'll be sent after the planning commission meeting next week.
All right. Because I think they tried to prioritize some of their areas of concerns. We're doing a lot, several of these now. We're working to try to update our forms. In the past, I think we were relaxed in getting that information out to the residents or the availability to the residents. Again, with updating the website and things, we're hoping that will, we can get a lot of forms on there if we can streamline those forms. So the residents or the contractors in general have the opportunity to get that information from the website. The code ordinances, there are several that, you know, during the updates that have happened. I'll just use one as an example. It's the accessory structure. It's noted in two sections of the code. One of them says you can have a toilet, the other one says you can't. So it's just general of cleaning all that up, because if one person looks in one area and it's just really confusing. So we're hoping we can kind of get that up. And we're also looking as part of the the future budget is maybe to update our building codes from the 2012, which we're enforcing now to 2018.
Okay.
So that was, I think that was one of the things that was on last year's list anyway.
And what would it take to update those codes from to 2018? Is that something that you need to bring in an outside consultant to do? Is that something you would do in-house?
We could, we could do some of it in-house, but it probably would be nice to have someone. I know a lot of other municipalities already started. I think Kent County's already went to the 2018. I think Millsboro is 2018. If I'm not mistaken, I think Sussex County is going to be going to the 18.
I thought 18 was what Sussex County was working on.
Yes, I think so. Everybody's leaning that way. It's just that one of the areas and one of the big ticket items always on the updated codes is the sprinklers. So a lot of updates to the 18 are excluding the sprinklers.
Right. So, so sprinklers, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, Robin. My understanding is at this point, so we've exempted them at this point on everything, I'm sorry, on all residential, including townhouses. The, my understanding is 2018 also calls for sprinklering of single-family detached homes. Is that correct?
If I'm not mistaken, that's, I think you're correct.
So even if, I guess the question is, I I know most places in the state have exempted both townhouses and single-family. I really think going forward, we, we need to look at not exempting at least the, the townhouses.
We may be getting a little bit into the details. Robbie, can I ask you, don't we need a code revision in order to adopt 2018? Because I think we adopted 2012 in the code.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. So we'd have to do it through the code, which is, it's in chapter 70, is where it talks about what we've adopted, the number, the, the different types of codes we've adopted and the year.
So maybe this is something that ought to go onto our agenda, Anne Marie, considering updating our city code to adopt the updated building code.
Right. It's, and just, and I don't, Robin, I'm assuming you've had to do this before. Drafting the ordinance is extremely time consuming and tedious. Do you agree, Robin? So it'll take some time. It probably, we probably wouldn't be able to get it on until probably February. Would that be your thought, Robin?
Yes, because again, then you're going to go into the details of what areas are you looking to maybe exempt or not exempt or things like that? So it's, it's a process. I mean, I think Kent County took an extreme amount of time trying to get up to the 2018. Because again, I'm not saying there's other areas that are not a concern, but the sprinklers are the biggest thing. And me and Henry's had a conversation about this. When you do exempt When you do exempt the codes, our thought is on the codes, the codes are in place with the thought that the sprinklers are being enforced.
That's right.
So when you remove the sprinklers, some of the other sections of the codes, you know, we're only doing minimum in the code anyway. So it's kind of a scary thing.
So there, what you're saying is there could be a standard that is lower because you're sprinklering, and when you take that out, then you accept the lower standard, but not the, the higher standard of sprinkler.
What it would have taken
Right.
several years ago to do.
Right.
Well, I think the 12, in 12, there was a sprinkler requirement as well, and we exempted that. So, I mean, the same kind of thing has to apply, so I don't even know that February is reasonable for you to get all that, all that done. But if we're gonna, if you're gonna do that, then we have to revise the whole thing.
I mean, if nothing else, we could put it in to say that, you know, we're, we're looking, or whatever the Mayor Council wanted to do, I don't know if you want to form a committee, or you want to try to do something to, to, to look at making that change.
Well, right, I think that before Robin were to draft an ordinance, that we would want council's feedback on, in particular, the, the sprinkler piece, because that is, it's gonna affect how it's drafted. So maybe we put it on the January agenda to discuss adoption of the 2018 building code, and then get the direction from council, or have at least the discussion about what areas we've opted out of in the past that, and how do we want to address them. I think it's really just the sprinklering. The, the other thing that comes to mind is that we've increased the freeboard to 18 inches, which I assume we would continue to do.
To 18 inches?
Isn't it 18 inches, Robin?
Yes, well, and the new regulations that come out from CRS, to keep our rating, our class rating of eight, you have to have at least 12 inches of freeboard. That's now a requirement, which wasn't required previously.
Right, well, we've got that, right?
Yes, we've got that, yes, that is correct, yeah.
But we may want to increase that, yeah. To, you know, and I thought, I thought that was done in foot increments, not half, not six-inch increments.
It, it can be done in any, but the, for, for insurance value, at 18 inches, your insurance rate is, is done in foot increments.
Is what?
Is done in one-foot increments.
Okay, that's my thought.
So since we went 18 inches, the.
You got credit for two feet?
Correct, that is correct.
Henry and I have had that conversation several times, so I thought that was the case. Once we went to 18, we got credit for two.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Tim, you're muted.
Tim, we can't hear you.
Sorry. And it was brilliant. It was absolutely brilliant what I was saying. Robin, in the other jurisdictions that have had code reviews, where does the public fit into that code review?
I, I would say you would want to have a public hearing on any, any suggested changes. So the public was aware of that.
Right.
Again, it's.
Prior to the adoption of the final code, you'd have.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Heard the suggestion for a building code committee to, that would include citizens. Would January be the right time to think about that, if, if that sounds like a good idea?
You asking me?
Yes.
Oh, we can certainly look at it, yeah. I think we need to have some input from Robin, Robin before we do that, before we appoint a committee.
I think there's, there's concern from some citizens about enforcement of the code as well as what it says.
That's absolutely true. We know that.
I, I would keep those separate, though.
Like that all the time.
I think that the concerns about enforcement really come more down to the zoning provisions than the, the building codes themselves. The building codes are extremely technical. So while we could have a, a public hearing, one, that the, the codes are, when you pile them up, they're, you know, yea high, and, and they're not readily available to the public. They could come in and, and certainly view ours, but they're not available online. They're copyrighted, so we can't just put them online. But I think that, that a lot of the codes where, where I hear members of the public get concerned about inconsistencies are really some of the, the supplemental provisions in the zoning ordinance.
Like setbacks and, and.
Lot of coverage.
Lot of coverage, what can be in the setback. I, I think that, and those are, are, we always call them building because they're, you know, implemented by the building officials' office, but they're part of zoning. Do you agree, Robin?
Yes.
So maybe.
Well, isn't that really, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tim.
I was just gonna say, isn't that really the area where zoning and building code, it's a gray area, they share common interests, concerns, and address some similar similarities? Don't they? I mean, there's a cause and effect relationship at some point in time between the two areas.
They, they maybe go somewhat hand-in-hand because they, you know, again, I'll, I'll say just in general terms, if you're reviewing for a building, you're gonna review if, if the lot coverage or the setbacks or the zoning, or the, the uses, you know, permitted in that area. So they're kind of all part of the process, but the building codes, the ICC codes are more just generalized of what can be in that building and how it has to be constructed.
Right. There, there may be some overlap, for instance, in, in terms of how close an accessory structure can be to the primary structure, because there, there's separation requirements and, and things like that, and, you know, where you get to window, if you have buildings that are very close and you have an exterior window, where, you know, how close can those things be? So, so there are aspects, but, but really the, the areas, you know, what, what you can have in your setback, you know, where your fences can be, where your accessory buildings can be, that's all really zoning.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, my understanding of why we use the uniform codes is because that makes it much easier for builders and homeowners, because they're, everybody's familiar with the codes. So I think the carve-outs aren't that extreme. So it looks to me like what Rob's talking about is, is, you know, is, and what Robin's talking about, unless I misunderstand it, is is looking at our building code, I forget the uniform code, but looking at our building code and tightening it up.
Right. Well, I'm gonna make. Doing about the 12, the 18 over the 12, then you gotta look at that as well.
So right, the, the concern with enforcement of the zoning code, how should we proceed while we're on?
Yeah, good question.
So I think some of that is being discussed as part of the, the Planning Commission's Action Plan Subcommittee. Am I right, Robin?
Yes, from what I, what I gather, it's, I think it's one of the items that they were looking at.
Okay, and, and what is the, the result likely to be of looking at it?
Have they just started that?
I, I think in general terms, I mean, again, I, I think we have some areas of, that are overlapped that are kind of inconsistent with each other. I think if we get those kind of tightened back up first, I think that will help. Again, I know some people have concerns about lot coverage. Well, is it a concern about lot coverage that we are allowing too much? And we need to tighten that up? I mean, I know the 65% maximum lot coverage, I know it hits some people the wrong way because they say that's too much. But currently, that's what they're allowed to do, and it's, some of it may be of, I just don't like it compared to, are they allowed to do it? So maybe, you know, during that time, that could, that could also be addressed. You know, do we cut back on that? Do you, do, you know, is that an area of concern? Do we want the accessory structure setback farther away from the property line? You know, that, that, all those things can be addressed at that time.
Well, you also need to look at your definition of what's pervious and what's impervious, because I think our definition of what was, if it's pervious is somewhat different than what Sussex County Conservation District considers as impervious.
Right, this, this will also, this committee or this, whatever, we have, wherever it goes, we go about doing this, also will require coordination with Planning Commission, because I know they're looking at some of these issues as well.
Yeah.
Well, there's.
In the context of sea level rise issues.
I think the, the Action Plan Subcommittee is, being a Planning Commission Subcommittee, it's probably a good place to coordinate.
How far along is the Planning Commission Subcommittee along in their study or their review, their?
Well, there's a couple of different committees that may be, may be involved here, that the Action Plan Subcommittee is essentially trying to put together priority, is trying to prioritize the Planning Commission's, not just their, their current issues, but sort of anything that anybody thought the Planning Commission should take a look at. So it, it's, it's not unlike this exercise today, right? You, you gather everything that, that might be a priority, and then you try to figure out how you're gonna tackle it. The Sea Level Rise Subcommittee has been talking about lot coverage as, because it's a function of stormwater. Right, the more impervious surface you've got, the more runoff you're gonna have, and the question is, where does it all go? So they've been looking at that as well. So, I mean, it's just, I don't think this is a complicated coordination, but it just needs to make, we need to make sure that we don't get, we have two groups going in opposite directions, or even the same direction without knowing they are. Right, I mean, I will say that there was, there was an effort to reduce lot coverage a number of years ago. I want to say like 15 or 20 years ago.
Actually, it was reduced, Bonnie.
Yeah, but I mean, they wanted to reduce it more than they did.
Yeah, but that was, that was a compromise, but.
Right. Particularly in the R3 district.
Exactly.
So, you know, this, this is, this is an issue that we should go back, and whatever, whoever, whatever group ends up working on this needs to go back and look at those debates and considerations to understand how we got where we got today, and then build on that work.
Yeah.
And then we also have the report from the Resilient Community Partnership that looked at some impervious cover stuff as well.
Those are my dogs.
Anne Marie, we know your dogs are home.
I, I thought, I thought I heard Robin say that there was already a committee of the Planning Commission that was studying this zoning code, but I must have misunderstood. Is that correct?
I don't think they're studying, they were, they were looking, the Action Plan Committee, I think, is identifying some of these areas.
Okay.
And prioritizing on what they feel is something.
Yes. Thank you very much. I was aware of that. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Robin, one more question if you don't mind. Well, actually, two. One of the things that was on there was code with respect to role or job duties, amend code to reflect job duties. Could someone provide some clarification on what that might mean?
I, that wasn't.
Right, so I, I think that, I suspect, and again, we don't have names, but I suspect that that might have come from Janelle, because there are a number of things that are specified in the zoning and subdivision codes that prior to us having a planner, the building official did. And now that we have a planner, they're, the responsibility of the planner, and I know, so it could be another person, it could be another reason, but I know that Janelle and I have discussed that as it relates to clarifying in the code which responsibilities are the building official and which are the planner.
Correct.
And I guess. Andrew, I'll almost stop you. Yeah, and that's, I think, one of the things on the Action Plan Subcommittee items also.
Okay, and then the question I guess I have for, for Robin, again, you're, you're on the ground every day, is, so, you know, we as a council constantly think about, well, ways to attract annexations and things like this. Are there things that we're doing in our code, the carve-outs, as mine said, that are maybe more attractive or, or better than what the county's doing, and are there some that we could maybe change that would make them more attractive, or, or just any top-level thoughts on, just from what you're seeing, maybe trend-wise?
I, I think just in general, I mean, I've, I've been hearing as far as building codes-wise and things like that, and, and density items, and I probably, Janelle can talk more on this. The county's more lax, again, and that's not saying that we want, as the city, to reduce to what the county's doing. So it's, it's good that we have those more stringent rules in place. So just in that term, you know, and, and you've also heard, you know, I, I don't want to be in the city because now it's just gonna be more tax revenue, you know, more, more taxes that I have to pay. You know, again, right now, they're taking advantage of all the services we provide, you know, and be able to use the areas to, and, and come to the city, but not having to pay the price as, as a, as a resident.
So there's also, go ahead. There's also the issue of the cost of a building permit.
Right.
Yeah.
And the fact that a person has to get a county building permit as well as a city building permit.
And we, we raised recently that issue of the.
We have, yes.
Yes, and do we have any follow-up on that yet? The issue of county, they pay the county fees, but they don't get services?
So not yet. There are, I wanted to kind of wait and bring it up after the Jones Farm Settlement. I didn't want to throw any monkey wrenches into the, the discussions between the city and the county. I did also reach out to managers of some of the other municipalities that have the full-service building, you know, services, so that we could perhaps approach them together. And I have gotten interest from those municipalities that I reached out to, so I expect that we will approach the county after the first of the year, because I, given the timing right now, I think if we went to them, it would, it would probably fall through the cracks. Seaford did let me know that they had this discussion with the county before, and that the county determined that they still needed it. You know, I think there's, there's two questions. One, do they need a permit of some sort? We might be able to agree to that, but does it need to cost the same as those locations where they are providing the inspection services? And I think that we need to make a compelling argument that it doesn't.
Anne Marie, the towns that you've spoken with, or these city government people you've spoken with, are they all an incorporated towns, or are they unincorporated towns?
They're, they're incorporated. They're, some of the larger towns are typically the ones that, that have that service on their own.
Right, and that's, and that's a, that's an important distinction. Yeah, thank you. I want to make sure that we, we're talking to the right people. Thank you.
And just, just to piggyback a little bit, and when we talk about our building permit fees, is, and, and I think the Mayor Council's been aware, we've, get a lot of discussions from some of the contractors, especially when he's talking about plumbing permits and the cost of the plumbing permits. Again, I know that's a, probably a subject in itself, but, you know, the, what, what is being charged for a plumbing permit could, could be construed as a little excessive.
Well, so, and just, just so everybody understands, the, in most of the state, plumbing permits are issued by the State Division of Public Health, and inspections are done by the State Division of Public Health. In Lewis, they're issued by the Board of Public Works, and the, the board has an inspector, so it, again, and if you're in unincorporated Sussex County, you're paying the state, and, and the state fees low.
It's $100 for a permit.
And what is it, VPW?
25%, 25% of our cost of our permit.
And you have to put up a bond, even, it, it's not abnormal to put up a bond if you're tapping a water main. And you have to put up a bond even, it, it's not abnormal to put up a bond if you're tapping a water main. But typically, your tap permits are separate from your plumbing, because plumbing is interior.
Right.
The building, it's not.
Right.
Or it's on the private side, so you will get a plumbing permit, say for a sprinkler system. But typically, it's, it's after the curb stop.
Correct.
And the, and the cost is related to, and the cost is, it related to the whole project, not just the part, the plumbing part of the project.
Right.
Oh.
An example, several years ago, the, I think the University of Delaware did a project, and of course, it's a commercial project. And they were, they were required to add like one sink as part of the project. Well, their total project for the remodel that they were doing was huge. So their plumbing permit was 25% of that for one sink.
Now, and I haven't had Glenn look into this, but the authority to issue plumbing permits is in our code and it does not delegate it. So I don't know how over time it, it became delegated to the board. But it, it does appear, based on my review of the code, that it's the city's authority.
So are you telling me, I want to make sure I understand here this correctly, that the city, an applicant comes in, is building a building, making a modification, whatever, they are required by the city to get a plumbing permit. And then separately from that, the BPW then attaches a fee for an inspection. And it's, and is that where the 25% kicker comes in? Their, their fee is rate, is ratcheted to the 25% of the permit fee that they've paid to the city. Is that correct?
Well, so the city doesn't issue the building permit, or I'm sorry, the, the city issues the building permit for the renovations.
And that.
The board, no, the board issues the plumbing permit.
Wait a minute.
So, so let me get this.
Are you telling me, excuse me, Andrew, excuse me, let me just finish. Are you telling me that the plumbing permit, that fix, those fixtures, the plumbing that runs interior to the, in the building, that runs on the house side, the structure side of the meter, is not inspected by the city, but it's inspected? We don't know if it is inspected, do we?
Oh, it's inspected.
Yeah.
But it's inspected by an agent of the BPW, correct?
They have a, they have a contractor who does their plumbing inspections.
Robin, so are you saying, let's say the building permit is $1,000. Is the applicant then paying $1,000 and 250 goes to BPW? Or is the applicant paying 1,250? They're paying 1,250?
They will pay $1,000 to the city and $250 to the Board of Public Works.
Okay.
Do you have, Robin, do you have people on your staff who are qualified plumbing inspectors?
Not through the ICC. I am a certified master plumber through the state of Delaware.
So Robin could take an exam and get that certification, I'm, I'm confident.
Correct. I'm speechless. Let the record show that, please.
This conversation has come up before previously, some time ago.
I am amazed at this. Because in fact, specifically the policy of BPW and their, their, if you will, call it their code, they, they restrict, they have defined their exposure, their responsibility to those plumbing assets that are strictly on the tap side of.
That's right.
The water line. So how and why would, would we allow or expect this practice to go on? I, I, this is a real, this is a head scratcher for me.
Yeah, I don't know when, when it became theirs. If you read the code, it does not.
Correct.
It does not read as if it's the, the board's, what, what was that, Mayor?
I think it's been many years.
I, I suspect it has, yeah.
Okay, and let's take this, let's take this conversation one more step. We have the Board of Public Works providing water service and sewer service to properties in the county. Who is doing the plumbing inspection in those communities?
That's a good question. I assume it's them, but I, that's a good question because there's a jurisdictional issue.
No, it's, the, the house, the house plumbing is done by the county inspectors for the state. Again, the state board health. So I'll, I'll use, say, Schofield. Schofield in the county, I, I take it the Board of Public Works is doing, is supplying the sewer and water for that development. This, the plumbing, the plumber has to pull a state plumbing permit through the county. He does not do it through the, through the Board of Public Works for the inside portion of, of the, the well.
Correct, correct.
The outside, I guess there is something done through the Board of Public Works, how they connect to their.
Connection.
Okay, and Robin, who, it, who is, who goes inside the structure to inspect the plumbing to make sure that all the fittings were done correctly, that, you know, it drains correctly, et cetera, in the county?
The, the, it's, the agency is the state, it's through the state of Board of Health, but it's a, there.
Their county office.
There's offices in the, in each county. So they have county inspectors, but they are working for the state. So it's a state inspector.
It's a state inspector, and that inspector would only be looking at what I just described, the actual plumbing fixture, you know, not the fixtures, but the plumbing pipelines and so forth, the sewage lines, et cetera, right?
Inside the house, that is correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Wow.
We're not going to resolve this today. We're not. I, I, it's, it's an interesting, you know, dilemma that we're in here, but I.
Yeah.
Understand the question, but I don't think we can resolve it as part of this strategy session.
No, but thank you. It was a nice discovery exercise. I appreciate it.
Robin, thank you very much.
I'm not sure it's a nice discovery, but it's a discovery.
Well, it's good to know.
You know, it's very good to know, but anyway.
Yeah, anyway.
All right. Anne Marie, anything else there?
Um, no, I think that's, well, the, one thing we have not discussed is, one of the things in this, again, came from a department manager, allow department managers to determine how to meet goals. And that was actually, there was a little more verbiage in that. Um, I, I think it acknowledged, where did my papers go? My papers disappeared.
The dog ate them.
Exactly, the dog ate my homework. But it acknowledged that council sets the goals, but that once the goals are set, that, oh, it's sitting in my lap. It's, whatever goals are set for the respective departments, allow department managers to determine how best to meet them. So.
Is that, Anne Marie, that you change your supervision of the departments?
Um, it may be our collective supervision.
Collective, but you mean council and city manager?
Yes.
Well, how can the council think about, think about this intelligently? What, what, what can our role be in, in addressing this concern?
Um.
I mean, my interpretation of that is to be more hands off with, on a, yeah, sort of.
It's my interpretation.
That's, I, I interpreted as we're micromanaging.
Yeah.
Right.
So it would actually be, the message would be to do less, I mean, from that perspective, yeah.
Right.
May I ask, if you, was this a civilian suggestion or a uniform suggestion?
Well, so again, they're all technically, I, I don't have names for anything.
Okay, because the only, my only concern with this is if, if this is, as we know, that the, the council goes through and looks at various departments on a periodic basis to ensure efficiency, proper staffing, see what the issues are, blah, blah, blah. So my only thought is if this is a reaction to the fact that, that analysis at this point is dealing with one particular department, I take it with a lot less, I'm a lot less concerned about it. If, if it is a plenary concern across all the departments, then I'm obviously a lot more concerned. That's just, just an observation.
I understand. So shall we move on?
Probably also say that whichever department is under review would probably say the same thing.
Right.
But if that is in fact what's happening, I'm not signaling, singling out any particular group.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on.
So workforce, provide opportunities for employees to improve skills and or develop new skills. Ensure staffing is right. Train and retain our staff. We have a lot of good new hires. Add staff. So the second one, ensure staffing is right, was a council one. The others were brought forward by department managers. I.
Anne Marie, can you speak to the first one? Like what, what opportunities are there currently? And maybe what plans are to have career improvement or that kind of?
Um, so I think, you know, and I, I'm going to say, I think it relates also to the third one, train and retain our staff, which I, I actually submitted that one. We've, we've brought on a number of new people and I think we've got people with a lot of potential. So I think both of these kind of go to the idea that we want to make sure that we're providing the training, allowing them to develop and enhance their skills. And obviously, there's a budgetary component to that. So, you know, where we are looking to tighten things up, we want to make sure that, that we allow for staff training so that they can develop their skills and, and hopefully become long-term employees.
But Anne Marie, we already offered tuition reimbursement program.
Yeah, but I think a lot of times it's not necessarily going back to school. Sometimes it's, you know, being part of a professional association or, you know, we, we have a number of staff who do Fred Pryor training that, I know Ellen Lorraine and I learned a ton at some of the trainings that we went through, through Fred Pryor. So it might be that the people have a degree or have, you know, so education reimbursement is one component. But I think sometimes the, the training session or a, a conference to, you know, learn more about. I'm going to just look at Rick.
Have you rejected requests like that?
No, we haven't.
So we haven't had them come forward?
No, so this isn't, I, I think this is more the idea of seizing on the opportunity that we have with the new staffing and, and making sure that we develop them. One of the things that I think in the past, and Rick, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at you, not, I mean, I, I think there was a sense in, in the streets department in the past that we didn't want that, that, you know, people came in and did their job. And, and I, I do think that we're trying to take a more proactive approach to helping people develop professionally. Would you, would you agree? I, I think your department's one where we have paid attention to that.
Yeah, and, and things have changed with, of course, in the last couple of months. Like she says, she said it all, it's, it's about training, opportunity to go out and improve and to learn a different thing. But also COVID has slowed that down, training. We haven't had that opportunity to really send people out like we wanted to. There is interest, but it's kind of slowed down right now, when exactly we can start this and do that. But like she said, she said it right, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to learn. And like the mayor said too, there is reimbursement, they know that, and there's people that want to take advantage of it. But with COVID now, it's kind of in classes and doing it through the computers, kind of, you, you have to put a little more work into it and figure out what the best time to do that is.
I mean, one, one example, you know, and, and I've seen this, and my guess is all of you have seen this a lot throughout your career where you get people who are technically competent, they get promoted to managers, but they don't get that, those skillsets developed. Rick and Allison just finished the supervisory academy that was done, actually Christine organized it on behalf of, of the city of Milford. And, and I think it was very beneficial to, to both of them and then will be beneficial to the department. So I think it's that when we put somebody in a role, you know, Janine is now taking the, the classes to become a certified municipal clerk. And there's a whole lot involved in, in that that has, you know, so I think it, it, I think by putting it on here, it's not saying that we're not doing it, but it's more just making sure that we keep it in the forefront.
I think it's great to keep it in the forefront. I know we supported Alice becoming a certified municipal clerk. And she went for, what, a year or more to half day or full day training. I don't see any reason why we would modify that policy to make it more restrictive.
Right.
Uh, I, I would think it's to our benefit to always encourage people to get more education. In fact, the COVID may have, pandemic may have actually helped some things become more accessible going forward because a lot of things have moved to virtual where they before might have been required either travel or in, in classroom instruction. So I would encourage anybody who's interested to make you aware of it, what their interests are, so we can react accordingly.
So, and then the, the other two things on here are add staff and ensure staffing is right. You know, I, I think they're connected. I, I do think that whenever there's a vacancy, we've been trying to be very strategic about what did that person do? What, what's the need and, and if we need to kind of shift the focus a little, we've been trying to do that.
Well, hand in hand with, hand in hand with that goes the idea of making sure that the job description's up to date. I think we've heard that.
Which we did. We, we've just done that, but that needs to be a continual effort. And under our new evaluation program, they should be reviewed every year.
Right.
Employees.
BPW just finished that big review with that consultant and they came back with saying, all your job descriptions are out of date. And, but we find that typically, they were recommending, you know, no more than every two years, that the job description should be reviewed.
No, less than every two years.
Excuse me.
They said all the job descriptions were out of date, but for, functionally, what, what the good news was, I thought is, I mean, assuming it's right, is they, they also found that the compensation was correct.
Exactly, yeah.
Were being fairly compensated for what they were actually doing, it's just that the description as to what they actually did was out of whack.
Exactly.
Right. So did anybody, the ensure staffing is right was a council recommendation. Is that any, does anybody want to talk about that one?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, budget and finance. Assess.
Can I make a suggestion? Are we going to break for lunch? It's now 12, almost 12:30.
I mean, I, I, that's up to you guys. Do you want to break for lunch or do you?
Like, let's take 15 minutes to get something to eat.
Well, or we could just, how about, how about we just, we, we adjourn at one o'clock and then, that's been a long day for us. You know, I don't care, whichever way I want to go. I, I think.
Mayor, if you're thinking we adjourn at one, then we've got a long way to go. So I, I heard you also suggest that we schedule a follow.
Early January meeting.
So should we talk about that?
That's fine.
If we're not going to get through, we might as well break.
Okay.
Does that, I mean, does that make sense to people?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm hungry too, Bonnie, so I.
Yeah, I mean, so if, if we're to look at the first, if we're to look at January, obviously, you're looking at, you know, January begins on a Friday, so, you know, that first week, starting on Monday, the 4th, if you want to try and get back together on Wednesday, the 6th, are you, does that work for everybody?
6th is not great for me.
Okay.
I kind of have a, like a company kickoff that Monday through Wednesday virtually. Thursday, Thursday, which will be fine.
Thursday doesn't work for me. I've got a healthcare commission meeting all morning that morning.
About the 8th.
Do we want to do Friday afternoon?
I was going to say Friday afternoon would work.
We do it at 1? Say, 1 to 3 and plan to wrap it up?
Yeah.
Now, I would like to make one other suggestion, which is, if anyone has heard something today, council, staff, whoever, that has, you know, brought additional issues to the fore, I think they should submit them so that we're sure that we've got, we roll into this, both the initial and any follow-on, so that it's complete.
Yeah.
I agree.
Mayor, the one thing I'm seeing on my calendar is a downtown parking committee maybe that day.
Oh, we're talking about 1 o'clock the afternoon.
Okay, okay, yeah, you're right, 1 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, that, I was, yeah, that's already on our agenda, and we need to have.
1 o'clock, right on the, on the, what day was that?
The 8th.
Thank you. Yep, January 8th, okay, 1 o'clock, okay.
I guess, are there any, if we're, if we're going to go ahead and wrap up, are there any kind of final points, or like Bonnie said, any like major things that are jumping out as we need to put a little more focus on next time?
Maybe just your, no, I take it back. Nope.
I have something I'd like to ask, Anne Marie. Given the fact that we are suspending this meeting right now, would it be possible to get a draft of what we have? I guess you're going to do minutes, is that correct?
Yeah, so Janine's not here, and Janine normally does the minutes, but I was thinking, because I've been writing notes and because it's been pretty detailed, that I may take a stab at the minutes on this.
Okay.
One, just to give her a break, and two, because I've got a lot of notes.
Right, and my point is, is that nothing real formal, but just little capsulizations of what has been discussed so that we can, you know, have a nice record of what we've accomplished.
Yeah, I mean, I have now several hours.
And also trigger what Bonnie wants us to do. What was that, Anne Marie?
I said I now have several hours free this afternoon.
Well, I think while you're doing that, it would be, if you're going to do it, which was a great idea, I think updating the priorities that were set in '19 to reflect what's been done, what's in progress, what's.
Okay.
You can, so we don't need to go back and think, well, did we do that or not?
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I can also update this list that I put out to put which are staff and which are mayor council.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, so we've been, we're at three and a half hours. Just, we've gone, we've covered a lot of ground here, but we still have more to go, so.
Yep, all right.
So what, how about a motion to adjourn, and we'll reconsume, we'll reconvene this, or not reconvene, but start with a second session of this on the 8th of January.
Second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a great weekend, folks. Bonnie, safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safely.
Okay.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.